I'll call the.
Somebody will.
Call them both together. Okay, I'll call the village board and joint plan commission meeting to order. Roll call valid.
Board trustees Maloney.
Here.
Herman Lane.
Here.
Danny.
No.
Mynell.
Here.
White.
Here.
John is gonna be late. And Zagami.
Yes.
The roll call on the plan commission?
Plan commission, we've got White.
Here.
Mynell.
Here.
Cronin.
Here.
Grant.
Here.
Jordan.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
And Mumper.
Here.
I don't know if I need to call as far as alternates, Maloney.
Here.
And Zagami.
Here.
Okay, now under public comment, let's see, John, if you want to talk about the tid one or two, I think you have here tid one and tid two. This five wasn't here, I mean, I guess we could go wait for five, but I guess now is as relevant as waiting for five.
I'm against both. The reason is, when I was here for the September thirteenth meeting, it looked like it was a closed subject. All of a sudden, last week, Friday, I get a phone call saying it's back on the board. The game started over again. We have a swamp that we spent a lot of money on along Weston Avenue out towards Jay. You drive along there and you look down, the highway is about four feet above the ground level. So what does a normal person think you got? Swamp. Where I think I saw someplace in this thing, thirty percent of it swamp? And we're gonna spend that money? When I moved to Weston in nineteen ninety, they were gonna build a road somewhere out near where Mac Miller Park is and go over Diozos. How many times has that been stopped? I live on Ross Avenue. And I'll tell you what, when I come out of there, when they put their roundabout in, in the morning, if it's at seven o'clock, seven thirty, I can hardly get out of my driveway. And now they're talking about developing some more housing out there by Mac Miller Park. And that's nice land, that's not swamp. A guy can build a decent house there. And I don't know why in Weston, we're looking at not taking care of what we got. There's a strip with two old houses in a wooded lot, somebody said it's five acres. We're gonna put how much money in this to buy it? Why doesn't the guy who owns it tear down the two houses and sell it? For what he can get for it? And I don't think we should be in this game of picking and choosing who's gonna win and who's gonna lose. I don't know what we're gonna do with this building. When this building, when the new Taj Mahal is done, who's gonna take this dump? The parking lot out here is beautiful. Whoever put that parking lot in five or ten years ago did a marvelous job. But what are we gonna do with this building? Tear it down so somebody else can do it? We got buildings sitting back here that are junk, should have been torn down ten years ago. We built a Taj Mahal out there for the dump where we got guys training how to drive caterpillars, how to drive dump trucks. I mean, we got a bigger construction company than most. What, after I drive by and look at our new building out there, that's starting to look like Greenac Fan? And it's embarrassing. I don't know what, where we came up with this goofy god darn idea. But you go down Schofield Avenue, there's places that don't have the Shell station. You can only get out of it one way, to go one direction. You go to Wrigley Field, the same thing. Whoever designed that must have been a moron. Because you gotta have a traffic pattern where people can get in and out of businesses. And I don't know what's going on in Weston, but we, nobody's looking at it that way. If, if they figure on building about a hundred and fifty more houses out in the country and bring them through on Ross Avenue, Ross Avenue is gonna have to become an honest four lane highway, not with a big bicycle park. And we, we talk about bicycle parks, let's start counting the number of people that are riding these bikes. Maybe we should have a circle where they can go ride a bike, just like our dog parks. We get one dog park, now we want two dog parks, all of a sudden, we want five dog parks, cuz it's closer to my house. I can walk my dog over to the park. That's nonsense. And I, I think we better start looking at running this like a towel.
Alright, thank you, John. I've got another one here from Laverne Rondo.
Hi.
State your address and for the record.
My name is Laverne Rondo and I live at fifty-four oh three J M Place in Weston. I don't have really a whole lot to add to that, other than that I have a question for all of you. I was at the September thirteenth public hearing as well. And there wasn't a single person who talked that night and made comments or that called in that was in favor of the amendment. So I guess, why do you think that any of those businesses, business people that attended that night or any of the public have changed their minds about it? They were totally guessing, so that night you tabled it because you said that you felt there was a lot of people against it and that, you know, for that reason, you know, you said there was a lot of angst, you know, from the public. I don't think that has changed, not as far as I've heard. So I guess my question to you is, why do you think that's changed and why have you brought it back to the table? And you, you know, it was reduced in scale and it was denied then, and according to the cost back here, maybe fourteen million, the proposed costs. And it says that this eight million of that is to be absorbed under the projected revenues in tables four and five. I don't see tables four and five on my list, so what are the projected revenues? Exactly how much incentivizing are we going to give people to come in and, you know, and do this? I guess, cost wise, there's really nothing concrete here and, you know, I don't know what you're paying this group to that you've brought into, you know, I don't know if you have someone from the outside doing a cost analysis of this or you're using your own people, but, you know, all of this adds up to a lot of extra money that we're, our taxpayers are already looking to, you know, their, their tax, they're going to go for the projected twenty million for our municipal center, if that's not even more, I've heard costs were over budget on that. So I'm thinking the same thing is going to happen with this. So I guess my question is, why have the opinion of the public, do you think they've altered? I don't. So I guess that's my question to you, you know, why was it brought back? Thank you.
Thank you, Laverne. Thomas Salzman. Just state your name and address for the record, Tom.
Tom Salzman, two seven seven five two one L R Avenue. The main thing is the tid, the tid number two should be closed. All the proposals on tid number two, most of them are for outside of the tid. The main idea of a tid is to benefit the members of the tid. And when you're putting projects outside of the tid that benefit the whole community and not the tid, you're not benefiting the members of the tid. We're working on water filtration systems and road projects that don't benefit the members of the tid. They meant, they affect the members of the whole community. So that should be something that the tid should be closed and those projects should be taken out of a different fund other than the tid. If we look at the fine print from the last meeting, the fine print on the last meeting is, i- it's not shown in this packet, but if you go through all of that, there would be asking the members of the tid to come contribute to these projects with special assessments and, and condemnation under state law that, as I talked to people going up and down the Schofield Avenue, number one, they don't wanna come to the meeting because they feel that they gotta discuss things with the staff later in life and they don't want the staff being upset with them because they're speaking out against the things. Which brings up a issue that's not a part of this meeting, but there was the big tiff, the big thing about ex parte communications. Last time we talked about the tid, tid number two. And every, the board members were accused of doing things that shamed, trying to shame them or making them feel guilty. Even the congressional hearings at the, in Washington DC don't follow the standards of ex parte communications. And here we are in the village of Weston, downplaying what is normal talk between citizens and board members and, and shaming them into ex parte, this term, ex parte communications. So that's something that needs to be changed in, in, in the way that we're looking at how we're holding these meetings and by changing some of these things, get some of the people that are being affected by these decisions willing to come and, and speak and not feel intimidated to stand in front of all of you people. So I'm asking the tid be simply closed. If there's projects that need to be done, you can open a new tid or fund it by other means.
Thank you, Tom. Any more communication, anything on social media? Michael or who's watching? Scott? Any other comments, any other from public?
Hello, can you, can you hear me?
Third time, any more comments under public comment?
Hello.
Okay.
Hello, can you hear me?
Communication disclosure recusals.
Okay, you can't.
Members of the body should make any required disclosures or recusals during this time written in the papers received. Did that, new business. Under number five, reconsider tid two project plan amendment. I, I just wanna answer, oh, okay, John.
Can somebody ask, could somebody's question, do?
Yep.
He asked, and I did.
I, I actually wrote them down here, John. So on your question on why it was brought back up, it was brought back up. At a previous meeting, two planning commission members said they, you know, they may entertain a change of, of, of their vote. Now that, that being said, that was said in public comment. I actually made calls Friday and I talked to the administrator on how, how is this coming up? Why is this coming up? Well, the simple answer is, by April, we have to have a decision. Are, are we closing it? It, it wasn't decided at Dale's Weston Lanes at that wedding, excuse me, at that meeting, excuse me, that it was gonna be closed. What was decided by the plan commission, five to two vote, was that it was denied. Those amendments were denied. Also, I asked, why are we bringing the board in? Cuz is the, are you, are you asking the board to reconsider and change that vote? On this issue, the board cannot change it. The plan commission has the final say on this. So if it's, if one of the five members don't bring this back up for a vote to reconsider it, maybe a smaller version or whatever version, whatever reason, then, then we have to decide tonight that we're gonna close it, and I believe the closing date is April, correct?
April fifteenth.
April fifteenth, okay, John?
When you say you wanna spend this much money on a project and the project doesn't go through, that money should be taken off the board, not put into another slot where some slimy person can take that money and spend it on something else. If you would have done that on the Taj Mahal, it would have never got to the price it's at.
Well, and, and that was some of the, the talk at two or three of the meetings, was that, you know, you have to declare a project or declare a, a construction project. But then, when you actually can do it, you can change it around. That, that did not sit well with the plan commission. It didn't sit well with me. I think if we decide on what the projects are, I think that's it. There is no changing later, that's it. Now, Tom had some.
The money just keep on going. I mean, I, I ran a business. I went to the bank. The bank said to me, how much you gonna spend? I told them.
Yep.
But I hit a great mark. They were upset that I wanted more money. I had to come up with more collateral.
Yep.
You guys don't have to come up with more collateral. You just, oh, well, it's overrun. And when, when you take this money that you put in for whatever project you got and take it and then all of a sudden slam it over here. I would like to know each individual project.
Right.
Like that five acres where you wanna take the two houses out, what money is available for that?
One of the biggest questions from some of the plan commissioners was, why is it off of Schofield Avenue? Like as in Tom said, why are we doing stuff on Alderson? Why are we doing stuff on Alderson and Ross? So that, those were some big issues. Now, I wanna just answer Tom's. On the ex parte, on the ex parte question, that was brought to my attention by several people. And I investigated it and I found that not to be true, that the five members out of the seven were talking before the meeting. That was absolutely not true. It was a perception by some, you know, that how could they vote this way? And I was at that meeting too. I would have voted with the five if I had my, my spot up there, so. But I, I did investigate that and I did bring it back to the people that questioned it, that they were talking ahead of the meeting or before the meeting somewhere else and it is just simply not true, period. It did not happen. So I just wanna answer that question too. Yep.
If I could just kinda add on to that, I think there was some perception amongst staff and I'll take some responsibility for that because, you know, there was perhaps some indications that we felt. But anyway, I think the main thing that you're getting at is how can it be done at the federal level and not here? You're talking about legislative matters at the federal level. Here they're talking, we're talking about quasi judicial matter, which requires a public hearing in front of a, you know, a regimental body, which in this case would be the plan commission. And they need to take their evidence and hear it at a public hearing, not hear it outside and discuss it outside of the room so that the entire public is, and the entire audience who is in the interest of that particular matter, they hear the evidence at that time, they can defer a decision, but that's, that's the main difference, as I understand it. Legal.
Wouldn't that be against freedom of speech? I should be able to talk to any of you guys.
Not in terms of process that's followed too, so I think.
Just on certain aspects.
I mean, if I'm walking down the street and I run into Hushay.
If you're talking about a public hearing, so if it's a rezone or official use, they're acting in a different manner than being a public official.
Okay, if I walked up to.
They're acting like a judge, you wouldn't do that to a judge.
If I walk up to one of the people on this thing and say, why do you want to enforce the tid districts on us? And can he give me an answer or should he just say, no, I can't give you an answer?
Well, before, before a, the hearing, a public hearing, they should not. They should not.
I'd have to wait till after the hearing and then walk.
During the, during, during the hearing. You should see it live, happening right in front of you.
And as poorly as attended this thing was tonight, I think this was a curve ball thrown at.
This isn't the hearing, this is a work session between the plan commission and the board.
Yep.
And it's a curve ball and not get anybody to come here to complain.
Well, you still have public comments, isn't it?
There will still be a public hearing depending on what.
We have public comments on every meeting.
Action's made.
Okay.
I'm saying unless people are informed, they can't get public comment.
I just wanna add one thing to Tom's, Tom's comment too. You had, you had mentioned we could, if we wanted to open another, another tip, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think that can happen because of how much land we currently got in tid districts, so.
You can't, so.
If it closes, it's done, it's done, we can't open another one.
So under new business number five, reconsider tid two project plan amendment. Along with that, if, if it's not voted back up, then in that same discussion, are we talking about closing two?
So the whole, the, the same process is actually done for both of them, so it'll require a public hearing either way.
Oh, okay, okay. So we'll have to do another public hearing.
Discussion, we're not making.
There's only discussions, cuz you have to work out the documents, I'll let Keith talk.
Oh, so this, this is not even actionable tonight? Cuz it does not say action, now that I'm looking at this.
We need direction on what is to happen.
Okay.
Because we have to take, we have to make a decision that is, that we know that the Department of Administration is notified of the intent to close or to amend the project plan for tid number two. So if I can maybe give a little background here too on how this came about. As you mentioned, there's, I think specifically, if we were to go back to the minutes that were taken for the October, is it the October thirteenth meeting of the, October eleventh meeting of the plan commission? There's a staff update and discussion about projects in, in the two tids. There was specific discussion of status of tid number two because it was pointed out that we needed to make a decision whether or not we were actually gonna close it or continue. So that's, that's led to tonight to come back and, and discuss this. There were in fact, three, three of the six members on each side, it was kind of a split discussion, there was no action at that time, but there was some sentiment expressed about being able to bring back maybe a reduced scope of a project plan, as was, relative to what was presented on September thirteenth.
Is that the Dale's, the Dale's meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
So I guess that's what we're here tonight to talk about, is, is there a, is there a desire to then move forward the reduced scope project plan or tid number two? And then go again through the process to re-hear? Or is there, are we simply wishing to close it? Then, then I guess staff would have to take steps either way as to what the next process is. I am not sure that it needs a public hearing for closure. I guess based on statutes, I think it's the legislative body that would make a, or adopt the resolution to close. And in this case, I guess that, that would be the legislative body, actually it would be the public, the board, I believe.
It's the board.
So certainly we clarify that, but we have, we have time. April fifteenth is the deadline, but we, you know, we need to make steps so we understand what the direction is from my commission and the board. So I did put some additional notes together, which I furnished to each of you in addition to what was in the staff report that's in the packet. I think that just summarizes perhaps what I just went over here. I know one of the things that was discussed later, if I go back to the October eleventh meeting was, you know, we, we had this flexibility, too much flexibility and too much ambiguity maybe put into the project plan as was proposed. There are tables, these are just simply reproduced from the proposal that was presented at the September thirteenth meeting. I think the, if we were to proceed, we would want direction as to, you know, what we want to be reflected in as far as eligible projects and then the, the estimated cost. So the, I guess first thing is, there's a, there was a table, table number two, which is the last item in this attachment. Which was the summary of the projects and total costs that were to be considered to be eligible for this tid number two amendment.
Do we have copies for the audience? Right, everybody has?
I provided table two and I provided a copy in my notes here, but the table of actual projects is in the packet, I made a couple copies of that. I think when we, when we discussed this with the plan commission prior to going to public hearing, this table was reduced in scope at that time already, based on some input that was provided. But I think if we go back up to the table one, which is the laundry list, if you will, the menu of projects that was made, that was proposed to be made eligible, there was many of these that were felt to be overkill, so.
On page nine.
I'm sorry?
Just saying, it's on page nine.
Okay. So the discussion I know we've had was that we would wanna limit eligibility of projects to those that are that are only benefiting or only helping grow Schofield Avenue. If not Schofield Avenue itself, which was project number one that was listed as first priority. But if you look at that table, projects two through five are all directly on Schofield Avenue. And then projects six through ten are outside of Schofield Avenue. So that's, we, you know, any discussion, I guess certainly that in mind, there's no, there's nothing says that anything proposed that is gonna be included in the plan. Select projects that are taken out or whatever. So I think one other element that we had gotten some comment from, I know trustee Mynell, commissioner Mynell has made comments about the satisfaction of the but for test in evaluating any requests for tax increment financing assistance. And if that is something that is desired to be brought forward during the project plan amendment consideration, that certainly can be done. So I guess with that, depending on how the motion goes, the board may or may not have any further action to take tonight. So I think that's, that concludes my comments. I don't know, Jessica, you wanna make any comments on financial aspects or if we wanna wait for his question to be session on that? Okay.
The chairman?
I'm sorry, yeah.
So I see in a couple of these projects, it talks about, as example ten, install water cube plant for well one and five, it talks about a quarter of the project cost assigned to tid. So three quarters of that cost be assigned to the water utility, is that correct?
We were to include that as an eligible project.
I'm just trying to get an exemplar, so one million two hundred and seventy-two dollars, is that a quarter of the projected cost? Is that the whole cost?
It's one quarter of the total cost.
Okay, thank you.
So that, so that one point two is actually a five million dollar project?
Correct.
And the other, the other three quarters would go?
The water utility.
Three quarters, okay. And I think there's a couple other projects that are also split out where the tid isn't paying for it all, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Correct.
Anything that wasn't on Schofield Ave was split, a certain percentage generally, at least fifty percent or less.
As an example, number ten, number nine is half of the cost is to tid two and the other half is general obligation, isn't it?
Correct, yeah.
So it's not all being, the proposal was to not finance at all to tid some. And I think some of the other questions there were about.
Yep, okay.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Man.
I, I think what Tom brought up is, was a good example that there's other sources or ways of financing it. If, if, if the utility needs to improve the water supply, then the utility should be the one that does the funding. I think we've had discussions at the trustee level with Jessica in the past, you know, as far as the, the ones that get issued and whether we're able to raise the utility cost. I mean, there's other ways of funding that type of thing, but to use the tid as just a, a bucket of money to, to fund some of these things, I don't think justifies using it that way. I, I just don't. And we have, you know, even the sidewalks, I think it was number nine, you mentioned the sidewalks on Alderson. I drive by that four times a day and we, we've survived without that. I don't know the reason for just putting it in because.
I wasn't endorsing it, I was giving it.
I know, and what, what I'm saying is, is that the plans that, that we had before got shot down because it appeared wasteful. And to me, it, it appeared wasteful. And I didn't think we should have them in there that way. And that's why I seconded the motion, you know, at that meeting. And what I'm hearing hasn't changed. I haven't seen specifics regarding whether we should give incentives or not, or the type of incentives, where we, it'd be very easy to say, would we give money, designate five hundred grand to, to tear down some of the old buildings that need to be demolished? Would we do that? Well, that's not what's being presented, it's being presented as two point seven million dollars for, for development itself. And that, what I'm saying is, is that the plans that we have hasn't, hasn't changed and I still don't feel we should have that.
Yep, Keith, put your hand up.
So we are not putting this forward as what we are recommending. We are asking you, for the plan commission, as the board, to say, yes, I'll support it if that's out or not. for the planning commission as the board to say, yes, I'll support it if that's out or not. That's, that's the question. And I guess in terms of identifying properties that we want to, that we plan to propose some, or I guess, I shouldn't. That we would entertain, are we identified that we're going to do some assistance to? I don't think we should even consider that. We should say we have a, we have some eligibility to do this, but we are actually going to be picking who gets that. And I don't think that, I don't think we would, I don't think anybody would do that. It's a, it's a, okay, there's, there are a number of properties up and down that Schofield Avenue corridor that could be eligible. I don't know which ones are going to come in and maybe have some proposals enveloped. And do you, does that?
Point taken.
No, it makes sense, but if we don't have the parameters set up before we're doing it, I'm not in favor of approving any monies like that. If we don't have parameters set up for how we're going to fund it, or what the money is going to be used for. So what I'm saying is, if that is an element that you want in the project plan amendment, if it is brought forward, we, that can be something that can be done.
Okay. Mr. Marshall?
Just for context, I wanted to remind us that Weston exceeds the guardrails provided by the state for TID so that taxpayers are not overburdened by the whole concept of economic development. We're double the allowable property values. Every dollar in TID, every increment results in increased levy on everyone outside, or every property. So just because you have development in the TID, that allows all the properties outside the TID to pay higher taxes without the benefit of those dollars supporting EMS, schools, county government, police, all the functions of. So, nothing has changed in, I believe Jessica, we're levying $2 million additional on properties because of what the TID increment, is that right, for next year? What's, what's the number that our increased levy is for the TID?
For this year, we have $11 million in net new construction and that resulted in $48,000. So if our kids were to actually be able to help create more net new construction, that would be great. So right now, we're not getting enough to pay our bills. $48,000 doesn't even cover the police union increase.
No, but what, based on that 340 million dollars that's already in there?
No, I don't know exactly what number you're looking at, so.
Okay, it's in TID and in TID out. I'll, I'll talk to you after. So we're at the, doubled the state limit of 12%. We've also increased TID one by 10 years. So, we're waiting, taxpayers are waiting more than 35 years for payback on their investment since 1998. We have the eighth largest TID in the state. The Department of Revenue report shows that your anticipated tax spending over the remaining life of the TID, we plan to spend $86 million. 86 million.
That is a plugged figure because I know the increment that will be getting to the life of the TID if we don't close it to 2031. And what you do when you do that calculation is you plug in some zero at the end. I have absolutely no authority to put in that we are going to spend $87,000. I just want to clarify that.
Okay. But the number has been submitted to the Department of Revenue, so.
It's the number that you can submit, but there's absolutely no backing for that number. It's the amount of increment that will be getting to the end of the life.
But, and it will likely be spent unless the TID is closed early. Is that a fair statement?
Well, the only projects that would be, only spending that would occur would be anything approved by the village board.
The village board could approve up to $87 million if the increment is continuing to come in as it's trending.
So, that's just the context of where we're at for the village, because you can't really talk about TID one in a bubble. We have to talk about what is the burden of TID on our residents as a whole. Unless we're willing to subtract land out of TID one and bring it down to a more reasonable amount like the 12% that the state recommends.
I have just a comment to respond, Mr. Minell said, utility should pay for this project. I want everybody to understand, we are the utility. My water bill is going to go higher because I have to pay for that. So, I know some people aren't on the utility, but still, it's going to affect majority of the people in the village.
We have, we've already, we have approval to raise certain rates. We can, we can do that.
Yeah, but.
And we also have a bonding, people that have indicated that are borrowing under their utilities. Our cash coverage is substantially lower, I think is how we put it, the last time we did borrowings. So, there's room to do that without tapping into this, this TID. It's just going to be done that way.
You know, anytime they tapped the water utility and we did the project on water utility, it affects our water bill.
Right.
Check your water bill, go back and check out. It, it doesn't, because that money got to come from someplace.
Keith?
I think, I mean, we, we understand the discomfort with the projects that are outside Schofield Avenue itself, where the, again, this is not staff saying we need to include it in the project plan. We're asking your feedback on whether or not you want to entertain this further at a reduced scope. And I guess, I mean, the other point being that there is an opportunity with the position of TID number two to help promote some redevelopment, development along the Schofield Avenue corridor. And that was one of the reasons that TID was created in the beginning. We realized that we have more of our assessed equalized value, if you will, in our, in our whole village in TIDs. And as we, as has been recognized, TID number two does not satisfy any, many, many level. Reducing that number significant, percentage significantly. You know, we, there are some, there were some things that were discussed in September about what the potential impact would be, say if we were to borrow on a general obligation note, the money that we needed, the 3.5 million for Schofield Avenue reconstruction. And I guess the estimate was that it might be around 30 cents per, per thousand on the general tax roll. Whereas by closing TID two, we would only see a reduction of around 9 cents per thousand. And just an item that was put out there before, so just to remind you, but.
Commissioner Bowden?
Something you just brought up. Eric, is the village responsible for the total repaving of Schofield Ave, or is that partially the county?
It's entirely the village's responsibility.
It used to be the county, yeah.
Okay. That, I knew it used to be, I wasn't sure if it still was, that's why I asked. So 3.5 million, that would be our cost. Nobody else helping us out with that, correct?
You're going to write us the grant or something from the federal government or something, but those things come with strings attached to unfortunately, you know?
Sure. Let the record show that trustee Zong is here.
Right? Keith, I guess my question is, when I, in understanding that a TID, and I actually went back to Wikipedia just to look up the definition, and the original intent was to do public financing method used as a way to redevelop a blighted area. And then I look at our number one priority, but I said, but I look at it and I say it's repave Schofield Avenue. And so I guess, right, a little bit of what I'm struggling with on, it's, what's the justification for having a repave? I mean, repaving to me is like we've already developed something, we're just maintaining it, right? So what's the justification for including that in a TID versus not having it in TID? Because I guess I get, I'm confused.
Well, infrastructure to support the development, redevelopment has always been one of the goals of TID.
Okay. Repaving, how does that encourage development? I guess that's what I'm struggling with a little bit.
Michael, how much every year you spending on Schofield Avenue for maintenance and concrete repair?
Probably about $150,000 to $200,000.
And you have done that for how many years?
Probably the last three or four.
It add up? I think, if I could just, the money that we have in the TID going towards that couldn't make more sense to me. In the sense, in, in the reality of it is, is that if it has, if we're in the the need to replace it, it's better to have the TID pay for it and use all of that, all of that money than, than to actually have it land on the taxes for everybody. And I can understand that that way. And, and I don't know how the better.
I'm not for or against it. I just said, if I'm looking at that proposal, my first thing I said was, what's our justification for our number one priority? And I'm not saying I'm, I'm not fighting against it for or against it. I just sat back and said, when I think of redevelopment, I don't necessarily think of you know, repaving, that's a justification, you know?
Okay. Michael?
I was saying, project description should probably be expanded a little bit. It touches on the storm sewer replacement. There are places that surcharge the storm sewer system due to the, the impervious area on the road. So a lot of the, there would be replacement of storm sewer enhancing that factor to reduce flooding through the corridor. Then also, you know, along the intersections, a lot of the traffic signals, the loop detectors, those things are, are old. You know, we have issues with signal lights not always working, so I, I guess there's a lot more into, it's not just milling and repaving. There's, you know, probably should say reconstruct or, you know, something else on top of that. So, I, I guess part of this is we, you know, we can do a better job of explaining exactly what that project, you know, getting that scope a little more refined.
Trustee Everly?
Um, yeah, I guess I've looked at this several times and I feel that at this point in time, if we don't re-figure the TIF to do the paving of that road, to, you know, get that part of it done, we're missing an opportunity. This is, I'm not necessarily for leaving out of the TID. I, I mean, those projects, I, I like the looks of the idea of making Schofield Avenue more what do I want to say, a pleasant looking, I've always said I don't find Schofield Avenue to particularly be a attractive street with all what's there, but I cannot see losing TIF one necessarily, I don't. Two, I'm sorry, yeah. TIF two to improve that at this point in time. If we could have expanded it and whatever, but we can't. This is what we've got. And to miss the opportunity to redo that road under TID. And as Michael said, with the storm sewer and everything else, I think if we have a designated project, not some, well, we could use it here, we could use it there, a designated project, I think we would miss an opportunity to do that if we just didn't do anything, if we closed it.
Bill?
Lauren, did, at one of our meetings, did you say you reviewed the current TID from, that was currently there and Schofield Avenue could be repaved under existing language?
That was one of the questions I had, because I did look at the original TID. And it, it, it kind of, it broadly states the project, it doesn't specifically identify them, as I recall. They're kind of vague, so that's the, that's the reason why, it's like, not really the best to depend upon that document.
I think the other issue that we have been advised by our planning council is always that as you look at the level of expenditures that have been authorized in TID to in order to do that, we would, in order to accomplish that project right now, we also, we have to authorize the, the additional expenditure that's listed here. Makes sense?
No.
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 So they're saying, he's saying that we have reached the level of expenditures that have been approved in TID two at this stage. And we can't, we should not take that anymore for, you know, risk of violating, I don't know, maybe violating the law for a while. But, the advice is that we need to, we would need to make this amendment in order to get things essentially in compliance.
But on this list of projects, somebody else have your hand up?
I have it.
Go ahead, Gary.
Go ahead, Mark, I'm waiting.
Well, I'm, I'm looking at this list and I, I asked for this tonight. I wanted to see, you know, the one, twos and threes. So on the, on the, the first two priorities is 3.5 million dollars for repaving Schofield from Birch to the west. So it's, it's, it's what's constantly being reconstructed in cement. Back to cement or asphalt? Cement?
I don't have that.
Well, I know, but we got 3.5 million dollars, so we must know if it's going to be cement or asphalt.
Yeah, I went with the, a concrete road. I mean, if we look back at asphalt, it might be cheaper.
But, okay. And then the other number one is, I'm looking back here, is acquiring and preparing land for redevelopment. $750,000. By who? Who would, who would take that on? I'm, I'm asking staff. Who, who would, who would recommend acquiring and preparing? Certainly the board or any elected board would not have that professional experience. I mean, I, I would like to think I am, but I don't think so. And, but I mean, do we have it at a staff level or do we have to get?
That was, that was something we touched on about a year ago. When we were looking at what some of the prospects might be for TID two. That's something that we don't want to be including them, eliminating.
Yeah, I, I know, but those are the two ones.
Some of them were outlined, some of the areas to kind of target were outlined in the Schofield Avenue.
Outlined by robbers, right?
And the planning commission and staff.
Okay.
So in that plan, there's a few areas for potential redevelopment, like the lane northwest side.
Right. But, but any of those highlighted areas, I, I don't, I can't throw a name from planning commission or trustees that they actually identified that, and then we put that in the plan, right? I mean, I, I don't remember.
Staff sent it on. I mean, you hired me to be your landlord.
That was my question.
So, basically, we've, there's pieces of land along Schofield Avenue that just, I mean, they've been sitting, I've been here almost 18 years, and sitting there.
Tommy's, Tommy's finally took over to Brad Reagan.
Right.
That's been there forever.
So there's a few smaller houses.
Northwest is another one that I've looked at since 81, since I came here. And.
There's just, there's different ways that can be accomplished. It could be someone purchasing and the board approving removal of the house.
And then along with that, we've got on the notes here, so on the 700,000 where, okay, administrative, legal and planning estimated at $723,000. That's on the 8 million?
That's part of the 8 million.
That's a part of the eight. So 723,000 is part of the 8 million. Okay. So that would be
That number was much higher.
About 12%, 13%?
Much higher than the original version.
Original was 19%, is what I thought I saw. So, okay, so a downgrade to 8 million dollars would be the 3.5 million, the 750,000 for acquiring. Development incentives estimated at 2.7 million, and then the administrative of 723. Financing costs estimated 360 for a total of 8,835,000.
That was as originally presented, but I think the question Mr. Donner has is, this is not, this original one, which was presented to the planning commission is, is not applying. What he's looking for is direction from the planning commission, the board. Is there, can we reduce it? If we can't reduce it, we have terrible angst over it, close the TID.
That's pretty much, yeah.
So we're looking at, I guess, tonight is the five, the five members. Not, not the two, but the five, go ahead. Gary, you had your hand up first, then I'll grab it.
Yeah, I, I've had it for a while.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Just, okay, Mark, that's okay. Go, and I'll, I'll get my attention.
My question is, is if, if this proposal goes forward to, to amend or to extend the life of this TID, who's gonna be the cheerleader selling this? Who's selling the property? Or who's, who's, who's gonna give incentive, who's gonna go to the developers?
That, that was my, that was my question to that too, yeah.
Because right now, you know, we, we, I don't, I don't think we've gotten very far in the last one, have we? As far as like communicating or, or, I mean, if we're gonna do this, the best avenue would be to get as much built out and done as quickly as possible, right?
Right.
So my, and I asked this question early on and nobody really answered me when we talked about this earlier on, who, who's gonna be the one selling? Who's gonna want, who's gonna market this?
Who's the cheerleader?
Yep.
Is it gonna be someone on, at this level or is it gonna be a, a separate entity that we hire a consultant to sell?
Because I don't think any one of us guys that are in business would spend this kind of money without having that plan in place. Who's marketing it? Who's moving this as fast as they can get it, so I can get ROI on it?
We don't have a development proposal from anybody, no.
Yeah, we're, we're missing it.
I know, it's, it's, I think what Gary's asking is, you know, to get some of these properties like Lane Northwest or whatever, to buy some of these and get them shovel, shovel ready for developers, so that we can try to sell them. Who, who is that cheerleader?
Who's reaching out to?
Yeah, yeah, Sheng?
Some community like Portis Van Hyde Schofield to bring the people to develop for them. And still I think he's working in there. And also city of Stephen, I think he's Mike Morrissey from City of Wausau. After he quit his job in there. So there are communities, they hire developer, they're real estate people to help them out with that.
I just like a marketing company. Yeah, I, I just got an email today from somebody that I passed off to you later this afternoon from a, a group in Wausau that wants to promote shovel ready, you know, uh, in, in four or five different counties, but they're based out of Wausau. Never heard of them, maybe somebody else has, but I, I don't wanna look at my phone and someone wonder what I'm doing, but I can share that a little later, but I've never heard of them, but, you know, they're trying to promote five and I don't know if there's a fee to it or not, but I, I just, I just don't think we have anybody here that's gonna be a cheerleader to be able to do that or to make decisions like that. I just don't, whether on staff or elected or appointed, to be honest, yeah.
I just heard one, I had more of a need to know type thing. On the infrastructure, um, we did that on Schofield Avenue, TIF, you know, as is Michael said, you know, gutters and the pockets and everything. How long, I mean, I assume the infrastructure that we have there now as far as TIF that we would have enough increment to pay for that, right? How long is that gonna take to extend the TIF to pay for that?
We're not talking about extending the TID, we're just talking about.
I'm sorry, I mean, if, if we don't close it, we, we leave it go. How long, how many years in the future does it, is it gonna be to pay off the constructing Schofield Avenue?
I think that's.
The projection is that it will be done by the time of closure.
Which is thirty-one?
That's the financial analysis that was in that.
Okay, and that was just.
They have the same dates.
It's the same closure date?
This is, yeah, this financial analysis was based on not extending the life, it was gonna close in twenty twenty-one or twenty thirty-one.
Okay, I understand that, but you mean it's gonna take that many years to pay off the reconstruction of Schofield Avenue?
Eight million dollars.
Yeah.
If the, eight million dollars were spent.
So if we didn't spend the eight million dollars.
Spend three and a half.
What if it was just the three, three and a half million to redo the road?
Then we redo the financial analysis for the pro, for a proposed project plan amendment that will come before if you, if you wish to go forward. And you can hear that, this is not what we're proposing to do necessarily.
This is kind of all occurred.
I'm constructing Schofield Avenue, okay? But I'm not gonna say that it's gonna take that many years to pay off reconstruction of. I mean, I would hope we had enough increment that we have paid off. Okay, Jessica.
The increment is six hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars for this year's collection. Six hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars we'll get for TIF two.
Okay, and it, have we paid, I wanna say, has TIF paid, it's paid itself off, correct?
No, we still have debt in TIF two. The funds that are available, we could pay off the debt right now.
Okay, because how can we close it if we don't have enough money? Okay, so we have that, and if we borrow, not borrow, but if we do Schofield Avenue in the TIF area. I just was wondering about how long does that extend? If we're looking at closing it next year, how long does that extended beyond next year? I guess it's easier to say that.
It does not.
It doesn't.
Thirty-one is it?
It would close. No. If we choose to do nothing, that's what I hear you say. We choose to do nothing, it closes.
Right.
And it's closed by the end of next year.
Schofield Avenue, how, what, I know we're, we're, we got it until thirty-one, but I'm saying is is it gonna take that long to pay off the road, the construction of Schofield Avenue if that's all we're gonna do?
Jessica, how many years, or what, you said the cash flows right now is six hundred and some thousand?
We'll have six hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars.
And what is the cash flow every year?
Six hundred and twenty-two thousand.
Okay, so it sounds like six more years.
So do we even have the ability to spend more than three point five million? I missed my question.
There's, there's.
There should be more increment generated.
And that's not a sure, that's not a sure play either because of interest costs. It could be paid off faster if there's more income generated.
And that's, that's, that's not considering any, in, in their formulas, in order to pay everything off on the eight million, they're projecting that you're gonna have X amount of more buildings that are being done.
Yeah, I'm just looking at what's there.
There's no guarantee for that.
You know, I'm looking at what's there and how long it extends it out.
Six years.
Okay, Paul.
Well, six years if nothing else gets built. Possibly more with.
That's if the project is going and all the other stuff.
Just financing.
Correct.
And interest.
It'll be longer than six years.
Well, six or seven, yeah.
Interest expense on it.
Yeah.
So evaluation of whether money would be spent would be on a case by case basis and then it would make sure it would cash flow or pay back by the time, by the retirement of the TID, is how that would work.
Uh, Gail?
How does the financial consultant get paid that's giving us the recommendation to borrow the money?
Dollars.
Borrow.
He would have to bond.
Issuance cost, there's the, there's administrative cost and issuance that they, that they roll into their, into our plans, correct, Jessica?
Yes.
So he gets paid only if we take the money out?
But he takes the projected, the projects that the village wants and sees if we can actually finance them with the current full of increment.
But he only gets paid if we borrow the money?
Well, we'll have to say that there, because of the last, the help that we received from TIF two for the previous TIF two meetings, we have paid him one thousand dollars.
Okay, Joe?
So, so to me, you know, the, the infrastructure part of this Schofield Avenue repaving, that's, to me, it's like the chicken and the egg horse in the cart deal. I, you know, if, if we're really going to get the land that's available for redevelopment finished on Schofield Avenue, wouldn't we be better to, if we allow the money to be in there, wait until those properties were to be developed to determine what you want for turn lanes and that sort of thing? So my, my issue with just saying that, let's put some money in there to repave Schofield Avenue, that wouldn't be my intent. My intent would be to allow the board the option to do something different with Scho, with Schofield Avenue after there's actually been some.
Additions.
Additions.
So, I just, Michael, I wanna bring you back into this, kind of off of Joe and some others. So we're spending about a hundred and fifty thousand a year on Schofield Avenue from Birch, you know, in that cement area, right?
Yeah.
So, um, and how long would a new cement structure, you know, three, three point two or three point five million dollars? How long is the lifespan on that? How old is Schofield Avenue now?
I'd say.
About thirty?
Thirty plus.
Is it? Okay. So, so this Damon, you've been here nineteen years, right?
They were just doing that.
They were just doing the Damon Farber thing, right, which is all that structure, so. So ten years prior to all of the W's and stuff and the landscaping, uh, that road was there.
I think at least I'd have to.
So about a thirty year lifespan, I mean, but, but ten years ago, we started doing all the cracks and crevices and they're ripping it up and doing all that. I, and I'm just thinking a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we do simple maintenance every year, that's twenty-two years instead of spending three point two million dollars. I don't know. So is, is it, are we gonna have the same problem again, once we spend three point two or four million because of engineering and maintenance costs and all that stuff? Yeah.
What?
This is gonna increase. That hundred and fifty thousand you're spending today is gonna increase.
Hundred and sixty, hundred and seventy, hundred and eighty, so maybe nineteen years.
Well, that concrete reach is life expectancy. Life expectancy concrete is about twenty-five years. Even with that twenty-five, there's still, you gotta do some maintenance continuously to make, make sure it's gonna survive. So this concrete already passed because every winter, after the winter, you will see how much pot hole we got on Schofield Avenue. So every year he has spent money to, to crack it and it's gonna increase over the years.
Any hands up? Um, I don't know, it's gotta stay between, right now, if this guy stays here, John, sorry. That's just what the agenda is.
I just have an open question. May show us that two hundred and fifty, three, three point five million. See if that project comes in at three million. What happens to that other five hundred thousand? Should we throw that over here and say, oh, God, we wanna do that project? And people in the county doesn't have a thing to say about it.
I, I don't, I don't know the answer.
It's only a plan, it's not a.
I know it's a plan, but boy, I'll tell you what, when I look at what went on with the Taj Mahal, that baby just started at twelve, fourteen, sixteen, eighteen, where are we at now? Does anybody know?
If that cement came in at three million, then it would just be, that would be what we borrow away.
Three million dollar project.
Yeah, three million, yeah, so there's, you're not gonna generate that half a million.
Just because we said it, it's potentially could be three point five or three point eight, if it's three, then it's three.
But what if it goes over? Because inflation, right? Then what do we do?
So correct, you're saying the TID would support eight million dollar worth of expenditures? That's what you have, what, with Jessica?
Not right now.
Not right now.
This is, this, this is making some assumptions on some essential development that may have.
Okay, so right now if the cash flows at six hundred and twenty-two, we have no new development in the next six years. It's three point seven five million in income based on six hundred, is that correct? Or am I missing something there? So in order to get to that eight million dollar number, we have to have additional developments, right, that, and that's not guaranteed.
No.
Right.
So the projects aren't guaranteed unless the development comes, because we can't go in there naked.
Oh.
They're not going to. Wouldn't it?
So then to.
So we have cash flow to support repaving.
And that's it.
And that's it, that's what Stephen ever said.
Yeah, but would repaving bring in more business? Or would shovel ready property bring in more? You know, I mean, I mean.
So it's all you're, it's all you're paying for.
Yeah.
That cuts, that ties back to John Roy's question about blank, okay? So I guess if that infrastructure deteriorates to a certain point, and it's all puddle, I, you know, that's not gonna track.
But it won't be puddles. I understand, we're doing it every year. But I don't, I don't consider that road to be light in my industrial.
But I'm just saying, it, it needs to be in, in, in good shape.
What's, what's the, I, I think the question here is how do we spend the money, if we spend the money, if we do anything? What's the best way to spend this money to encourage more development? And if it ain't the road, and if it's about buying property and getting it shovel ready, then that's the avenue we should be going, not for the road and hoping that someone comes in. Who, who brought up, Roy brought up or, or somebody brought up? Waiting for the development first, then change, because, yeah. Because what if turn lanes come in, what if this comes in, uh, Gail?
Like they said, you got three point seven million dollars over the next six years to do your land acquisition, your development incentives. You don't need to borrow eight million dollars.
We're not borrowing.
It's confusing that it says financing cost, I'm not sure why we're borrowing either. I wasn't consulted with that, or, or just developed that we're borrowing. I guess that's up there in case we need to borrow by soon. But currently with our TIF one situation and with the cash flow of the village right now, we could probably loan TIF two monies we would, uh.
So we could identify a partner, as Husheng has said, that could be, could help to market or to um, inform landowners or you know, people have their property on the market that we have some ability, or we could do that amongst staff, maybe something you want the administrator to be involved in, I don't know.
I think it's more Keith, when I, when I say that, it's more reaching out to um, larger corporations like nationwide companies, franchises, so on so forth.
Which prior to COVID, we used to go with Maryland County to Chicago and do that. So it's not something we haven't, but they're not doing it right now. That stopped the last time we were there, twenty eighteen.
Is there any indication that's gonna start again?
They're starting, they had the big one in Las Vegas, that's coming up.
I think you, you did about five years prior to twenty nineteen, so it was, when did it start, like twenty fourteen?
Yeah, McDevco used to be involved and all the communities went down together and shared a pool.
Were we successful in bringing anyone in?
Um, it got our name out there and contacts with different people, but a lot of them are larger, looking for larger pieces of land um, that weren't really available.
So it probably wouldn't work, I mean, despite it not needing, the five years we went, we didn't really get anything out other than name recognition.
I wouldn't say that, um.
I mean, until you can point to a project and say, well, because we met them there, now we have this.
I think it built relationships too with the other communities that were down there. But we, um, we weren't exactly targeting certain, I mean, when we were down there, we were down there for Camp Club Center and had other properties that we took with.
So the question is, is if we just have property owners over there and we want to, we don't really own the property to market it, how do we think we're just magically gonna shake a stick and pre-develop? Is this just a waiting game for something to happen?
It would make sense to, to contact people like, you know, the, and I, of course, QuickTrip bought the formerly Northwest site, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
There's some other sites along the way that we certainly can make contacts with. There's been some inquiry about the former, uh, Green Acres Mobile Home Park. But we don't know what we can do to help them right now.
Alpine.
We, we have.
Alpine.
I was gonna say Green Acres.
Green Acres.
Green Acres is still one, if I mistake.
That's all right.
Alpine.
Alpine, Green Acres would be.
Right now we can't do anything.
Because I'm not in favor of spending the money with all, but I don't think we're spending money.
Cause I'm not in favor of spending the money with all, but I don't think we're spending money, right? Not spending any money. No, but I, I just.
And some of that's gonna involve discussions at the board level. And I mean, I personally would think that you'd wanna do those in closed session because you're talking about properties along the avenue. So that's things, I mean, that's some of the things you can't. You're not gonna watch prices to go up, um, on different properties. That's something that the board and plan commission. Will probably have to talk about, but you would be maybe potentially targeting certain areas. Um, that you wanna see redevelopment. There are some things in those plans that were discussed. On certain properties that could be positioned together to make larger pieces of property. Um, that would make it more conducive for development.
Yeah, Lauren?
So my understanding of incentives, if we have a developer. X, Y, Z comes and say, I'm looking at these two pieces of property, but. In order for me to get this to go, I need some help in demolition or putting in utilities. And that's, from my understanding, that's what incentives are for, to, to make them get over that hump. And that's the, my understanding of incentive. It's not necessarily to buy the land, it's help. The person that's looking to purchase land or already has land, but in order, maybe it's gonna cost them. Fifty thousand dollars to demolish your building that's sitting on the site. They don't, they just are at the max as far as their financing capabilities. And, and I assume some of those people here that are in business understand that pretty well. But that fifty thousand dollars or twenty-five thousand dollars could make the project go. And that's what I understand incentives are for. Not necessarily to buy the land, but to help a developer do some of those things necessary so it makes the project a little bit easier. And in, in turn generates increment to pay that money that we give it best to do as a community.
We, we've had projects like that and we've said no. You know, I mean, as of late, I don't wanna name it, but they came in, they had their hand out and we said no. And they came back a couple months later and built it anyway. Joe?
So full disclosure here, I own one of the pieces of property on Schofield Avenue that would qualify for redevelopment money. I'm not looking for the village to acquire it. What I'm really looking for is if a, if a developer comes in, what can you do to help them? Get over the cost of, of the demolition that would be required, as a, as a for instance, on the property I own. Based on the, on the appraisal that we have, the, the building is actually a detriment. And if we close this. The issue that I have is then as a, as a village in our zoning, are we gonna allow those property owners then to build whatever? They can to utilize that property. There's been all kinds of. Potential uses that don't fit into our current plan, right? Is, is the way that I would characterize it. And I, I don't wanna go back to that. But I.
Or, or lack of development because the, the costs are too high.
Right. So the, so for me, you know, I mean, I, I really. Like the idea of putting Schofield Avenue rebuilding into this thing. Long term with the idea that somehow we get the board to recognize we're not gonna spend or do that until we actually. Get through what we're trying to accomplish with our properties along the avenue first. So, so for us to extend this and just say, okay, we got three point two million dollars available to repay it, I'm, I'm not for that. You know, next year. I, I, as, as a planning group, I, I think it's important that, that it's in there, the stuff that's on Schofield Avenue. But the reality is that, that the thing that's gotta happen first is something has to be done with those properties. And I don't expect the village to buy them. That, to me, is not. Not a, a good plan.
So start to finish on that, uh, avenue, Michael. You know, start and then finish, what is it? Couple years? Three years?
Yeah, I was, uh, trying to grab. I think the CIP, I wanna say I have it as like a twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six year. Construction project, you know, I mean, even if you guys said today, hey, here's money, go, go do it. I mean, it's gonna take. Probably over a year just to get designed and.
But my, my thought is, why wouldn't we wanna back it up so we can do what Joel is saying?
Exactly, I mean.
We're gonna close this in thirty-one regardless.
Yeah, I, I think twenty-six is the last year we spend money, I, I do believe.
Right, so the idea is. The idea would be to get something done with the redevelopment in the next couple of years. To, to really close this thing effectively the way that it was originally intended or designed. So, so that's why I'm, I'm. Not in favor of closing it at this point, if we can figure out a way to hold ourselves accountable for what we're actually trying to accomplish with this.
So by not closing it, we would have to propose something. We couldn't just leave it open.
No, we can't.
We have to have some increment towards it.
We have to also. Show some expenditures, otherwise we're gonna be. We're gonna be asked to close it, right? Right, Jessica?
But you can close some expenditures without adding eight million dollars. Yes.
Okay, and that is the answer we were, we were talking about tonight. We don't need to stick to this.
Yeah, we can do three point two, three point five, we can do four, yeah.
But it's already there. You're already generating that increment under the existing plan. You do not need to do.
We don't have the project plan that allows us to do the type of work that they want. They're talking about the land redevelopment stuff, our project plans, which doesn't work.
So you're, you're basically wanting to amend, amend it, right? Sending amendment in. And in the amendment, you have to identify, you have an opportunity to identify the projects or the value of what you wanna amend.
Right.
Not necessarily that you have to spend that money.
Right.
But you have to have it in there in order to access it, or you cannot do it.
Have it be eligible, yes. So for me, it's, it's, it's pretty easy. Take all the stuff that's not on Schofield Avenue public. And, and hold the board accountable for not spending the money on Schofield Avenue until the effort has been put into. Getting those properties to change hands, because the reality of. Michael trying to plan what to do with Schofield Avenue when he doesn't know who's going to need what for access is. It's pretty tough. So do we wanna change the priority of the projects?
Well, if one of the five makes that motion, you would wanna put, what projects do you want in there? Barb?
Well, I guess if I'm understanding Jessica correctly. We do have to have some projects and spend some money, or we're going to have to close it.
No, I don't think you have to spend the money right now. They're, the, 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 what they're asking, what they're asking for right now. Is not in the original, right? So if they have to, if they do Schofield Avenue, that has to be written in it, so they have to do an amendment. And also developer incentives, none of that stuff was included in the first time around.
So we either have to amend it.
Or close it.
Include those things so that we can move forward, or we have to close it.
Okay, I understand that, but if, my question was, if we're waiting on Schofield Avenue for the development. Will, if we're not spending, I mean, we put it in the plan, okay, but we're not spending it yet. Does that trigger? The state to say, hey, you're, you're sitting on this?
Good question. No, I don't, I don't think so because we have all these and they may never go.
I know, but I thought, I heard Jessica or Keith say something about. If we don't, if right now we aren't spending anything in there and if we don't spend the.
Would, would payroll, would payroll, uh, suffice, uh, spending money? You know, staff is working on it. Could, could you take ten percent of three people and, and expend that in there? And that would suffice the expenditures?
Well, there's still an allocation of some salaries in there.
Okay, well, that was my concern. If we're holding off, are we gonna get into the issue of? Well, you're not doing anything, the fact that we're waiting to get other things ahead. I, I'm concerned in that.
It just resets the plan.
Okay.
That's what I would think of it.
Well, I, I would verify that before we, if I thought that's what Jessica said, that.
Because you would never do, I mean, you could, I suppose, start Schofield Avenue, but really. In a TIF plan, you'd be working on all components of it or picking out. So. If this went through and the board's directing us to start working on. Doing some of the redevelopment and talking to people and getting that going, that's never been a priority since I was here. It was created and they gave, I mean, Husheng built a brand new building there and there was other properties there. Nobody was ever given any kind of incentives except for landscaping, I believe, and they, they wouldn't be very much. That's just how that one was kind of used.
Okay, well, that was, that, that was just my question is, um, to make sure that if we're. Waiting for, you know, but if you're going ahead with it.
That would be something, I mean, we're talking about doing a strategic plan. That would be something about prioritizing. You know, staff to be either working on it or finding somebody to assist us to be the cheerleader. Um, on that, if that's a priority to the board.
When was the TID created?
The first one, I think it was like.
TID two.
Two, four, oh four, I think.
Oh, four?
It was right. I think it was oh four or six.
Okay, so if, if it was, uh, why does the TID have to close? If its extension is, or its end date isn't thirty-one?
That's the, that's the length of time it can be in existence by statute without any kind of a.
But you're saying by April. Why, why does it have to close by April instead of twenty thirty-one?
If we don't have any commitments to spend any more money and plan to spend any more money, then there's need to close it.
Okay, from what I understand from what Jessica said, we would have enough increment or kind of.
You would.
Savings or whatever that we could pay off what is left of our debt, correct?
Yes.
And that would end it. If we don't amend it to do some projects. Um, then we'd have to close it.
When did that restart start? That, that April is the finish because we're not spending money. When was the last time? What? I, I know, but when was the last time we spent money that, that timeframe took place that April would be to close?
We're still paying debt service. We, and we've had, we have had some infrastructure projects that we've.
Okay, so.
Worked through that as well.
Gary?
So. There hasn't been any, sounds, sounds like potentially any projects in that corridor in what, last? Four or five years? Is that because of the limitations of? The availability of? Money putting towards demolition? I mean, I know I look at the house across from. Um, the, the car wash, the top, the new Tommy's. That guy wants a lot of money for that because he feels it's a commercial lot.
And by the house, the.
That wants a lot of money for that. But.
I think that, that's another, that's the other thing to be more explicit about what we can use the funds for. I don't think there was enough.
So I guess my question is, is, is that, is that what's limiting?
Yes.
Any development right now?
Right now, yes.
No cost. Is that, is that really what we're, is that a result in the last five years?
The language.
You don't have a clear. Direction that this plan, the current plan allows us to do that.
The current plan doesn't allow for the developer incentives.
I, I struggle, I commend this to be part of the road and to allow that, then it would.
I just struggle with that. We put a TIF together to, to. Incentivize and grow. How do we, not saying that every project has to have incentive, but. And I don't wanna bring Zuliger's name up, but look at how fast that, that subdivision filled up. And he, he, he wasn't a boat no, and I'm, again, that's a butt whore. If you, if you couldn't or wouldn't or whatever it may be, he just seemed to make it happen and, and shit was flying everywhere. So, um, them incentives, whether people agree with them or don't agree with them. It entices people to, to, to build, so. And I, I'm not advocating that we go throw money around to.
You're right. No, you're, you're correct, Gary. The reason that we built was to supply where we did was because of the. The incentives that Zuliger brought to us and I didn't even, we didn't even care about the. How many employees and all that sort of stuff that we could qualify for. The thing that caused us to decide that. Was the cost of the, an acre of land. I mean, there, there wasn't any place that we could build that was shovel-ready for the cost. You know, we bought that property for. I mean, it was a no-brainer.
Road access, highway access.
Problem with Schofield Avenue is that. It's, it's, the appraisals come in for the land relatively high, but it's not shovel-ready. It requires, I mean, there is no value to the buildings. They need to be torn down.
Right.
And that's what a redevelopment TIF is for.
Right, so, so the only way this is gonna happen on our big plan is. That has to be, that has to be. At the focus. I mean, it just has to be the focus. To find those people that are interested in doing that. And, and the, the, so the, the reality of, of extending it. I'm for that as long as we really hone in on the reason that we're doing this. And, and again, I don't have a problem with including Schofield Avenue rebuilding, but to paraphrase it as repaving. As a, just a project that we can, we have this bucket of money we can use is wrong.
Right.
It needs to be rebuilt based on what the, what the, what the. What, what, what we need on that street once it's actually converted and time's up.
Steve? What I struggle with is that redevelopment TIF has been, it started in two thousand and four, and when I think back. As long as I can remember, I know I've only been here thirty years, but. I, I, I don't really know, I don't, I guess I don't really know what has changed all that much on that corridor of land in the past seventeen years. I mean, I'm sure there's been a couple developments here and there, but I.
Wait a minute, actually, is that the focus was that just? The improvement of the beautification of the corridor?
Beautification, sure, but a lot of the build, a lot of the commercial structures, the buildings that are there. Were there back in two thousand and four.
No, again.
Uh, not the life center. Raleigh's entire center on Camp Phillips. Bushing's.
Parking lot, Target.
Tynan Cellar, parking lot. Yeah, but Tynan Cellar is not in TID two.
Base hardcore was, but well, it wasn't in hardcore. They were looking at possibly rolling.
TID two is from Birch Street. You're right. Down, so I'm thinking just that corridor. I mean, we got a lot of development down here towards Camp Phillips, but.
You didn't have the grocery store on the south side, which is now.
There's some horse straws that have gone in since I've been here.
Uh, Quick Trip is real good.
Quick Trip's brand new.
Every bank.
They toured on High Ruler.
Every bank.
Yeah, but that was three to four years ago, I thought.
No. To answer Steve's, Steve, to answer your question, I think that's what we attempted to explain. The scope of what we could do with the money did not extend to doing anything. Producing a property, assisting redevelopment. That, that, that was not part of the scope of the TID at that time. The first, the first realm, right? The original document.
They gave landscape.
Yeah, landscape. It was really vague and, and it wasn't specific enough. And from what I understand, you have to specifically detail what you wanna do or what you could do. Doesn't mean you have to do or you are going to, right?
Joe, when you said, just then, then Gail, Joe, when you said, um, like you have a building and you have to tear it down, so the land is worth it. Except you gotta tear the building down, right? Right?
Yes.
So when we took.
That would mean in a playing field, so that's like green field.
Right, but, but, so it, it cost us how much to take down?
Well, it's a ten, some ten.
No, no, GB.
Hundred pounds.
Hundred, I thought seventy-five.
I'm sorry, it was under, I mean, estimated at a hundred and ninety.
Our first, our first bid was a hundred and fifty and then we got it for half price at what, seventy-five? So if that big building was seventy-five, to demo, let's just say yours, for example.
Well, salvage value there.
Yeah, in, in GB, you're right.
I mean, it's a concrete block building and a, and a big slab, so you're, you're looking at spending probably fifty, sixty thousand dollars.
Fifty, sixty grand, okay. Then it's shovel-ready.
And, and then it is because all of the, the environmental stuff has been done by both I and Tony Maurici. So it's clean. It's not a brown field or any of those other sort of issues. We, we've taken responsibility to cover all of that. It's just that we're at a disadvantage for some reason.
It's not that we have to buy the properties, it's that we maybe have to help with the demo.
An assist with demo.
It's very, very worrying.
When we purchase a property, if we do, we can demolish the building ourselves. Then put it in the market and we don't have to worry about that issue. The demolition usually go about fifty cents per cubic feet. Or be given a take, it could be higher depending upon type of structure, but it's not a big item, big number.
Right. Gail?
While the projects.
While the project sounds good because you want to develop things, we're still ignoring the fact that we're double. The TID value. Until we can subtract land out of TID one to bring us more in line with what is reasonable to rely on all the homeowners outside of this commercial development, I'm a no-go.
Okay.
And we can't take that land out of TID, TID one?
You can, you can subtract, we can subtract portions of the land.
No, we can't, we, we went through that with, within the summer of the meeting.
Well, I was just gonna say that what we can or can't consider taking out of TID one would depend on what other projects we continue to take on. We need to, we need to step back and really analyze that. We do, we do have another, I think about the agenda that I was talking about, what we actually could now mean our number-one priority is TID one. So can we, I don't know that we could substantially reduce the, the area, the land area that's in TID one. Ideally, we'd like to be able to close it automatically, I think you mentioned that before, we don't disagree with that. We also need to even up in there to pay back any.
But you don't have a plan to do it, so we're.
Any additional debt that may be taken on, that, again, we want to take advantage, I think, of any opportunity we can for assisting development with the TIDS. And I guess that's my take on it.
So? So if we close the TID, can you, was it nine cents?
Nine cents a thousand.
Nine cents a thousand. I struggle with that.
Yeah, it's, it's nine cents a thousand on TID two and TID one is, is the big one. I mean, that's, that's more, but I think, I think TID one is relevant.
Yeah, I certainly appreciate what Gail was saying.
Yeah.
The reality is that addressing TID one is probably another.
That's the more important thing, to be honest.
Just point out, for clarification, if you go out to our site and look at what was being proposed in two thousand and four. It's the exact same buildings that are shown in the pictures on the plan. The, the, the one that you talked about that's asking for big dollars, Joe's building's here, Tony's building's here on the identifying back in two thousand and four.
But they didn't have, they didn't give anybody incentive to do it.
What I'm saying is, is that's the reason it was created back then was to get rid of the, this void. And that's, those are the properties that were being pointed out back then.
But, but I, I will argue the fact, Steve, if you don't give money to do that, you'll, you'll, you'll sit to watch those buildings sit there for another sixteen years. I'm just gonna be honest with you, that's just, that's gonna happen. We'll be sitting and watching, I mean, we can sit and watch those buildings years down the road because nobody's gonna take that, uh, take that loss. It's too much money to, to develop.
So Steve, how many, how many other lots have been developed? I'm trying to remember what was on that QuickTrip lot.
It was a small.
It's a roller, roller rink, roller rink.
Roller rink, roller rink.
Roller rink was in where the, like, the car wash portion is right now, if I remember.
Plus, there was those apartments that are further south were also in their own.
That's the Wendy's, there was a certain, all that was built.
Yeah, but I agree with you, Steve, that there are some of the same properties on there. There has been progress made, but the properties that are left are the tough ones.
The shift went to the business park. And that's really what Dean was doing when I first got here, and that's what our, you know, whatever happened on Schofield Avenue happened, but the concentration was on the business park.
Well, and you, and you, and you had, your hands were tied, you couldn't, what, what were you gonna do with those buildings if somebody came in and asked for help?
Right, right.
Because of land in the law.
Right.
That's right. So in the same situation, what happens? They develop the easier property, the less costly property. Greenfields developed, greenfields.
Well, and closer to Camp Phillips with the traffic.
Besides like a QuickTrip that can afford to do it, right?
Right, you're gonna see places that have, you know, some of the national, they're, they don't care, they'll just do it. But it's the smaller ones or the little.
Well, they care, Jen, they'll do, they'll do a market analysis and see how much cash flow, they're not gonna just throw it out there and, you know, spend the next.
They have an easier time doing it than a global company developing.
Steve, go, keep it in the rise.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, we're not really talking about extending this to twenty thirty-one, it's twenty twenty-six because.
Is it extended, sure.
I, I mean, I agree with Gary, and if, if we don't give incentives to get somebody to a greenfield, it's really difficult to develop unless they've got some huge advantage for being at that location, right? But if we agree to go down a path of saying, yes, let's extend, it's really a four-year shelf life, right? Because nothing's done by twenty-six, you can't ex, you can't expenditure anything beyond that, is that correct?
We have to, we have to take the decision to amend right now before April fifty.
Right.
We shouldn't just order extend, we're not extending.
We're not extending.
Right, we're not extending. Be keeping it open.
Right.
For its statutory life, I guess, and, and under the statute, the expenditure period ends twenty twenty-six, five years before it has to close by law.
So you can identify by twenty twenty-six, Keith.
Right.
But still spend.
We could.
Into the thirty-one.
There is a way to identify, if we have commitments for spending through the end of the TID, yes, that, 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 we could then, you know, continue making. But what's nothing to pay off that debt that's still existing by till twenty thirty-one.
Well, it almost gives you three years because, I mean, if somebody has had a, a plan in place by the, three years from now, how, how would you scramble and get a plan together and get a design and get a, you know, less than a year? That's.
Can, I mean, is there a way we, I mean, would it work to just earmark spending money for development incentives and, and not put any of these other projects in the plan? If we wanted to just make it about redevelopment, I mean, is that a possibility?
I don't know if we have enough. Let's see, if that would satisfy the need to, you know, to show that it's still, when we're, we're still occurring spend, expenditure expenses during that time. That's something we need to get, probably just need to get an answer from our, our initial consultant.
Or would it be the state? Because the state is the one who has, the Department of Revenue is the one who's forcing you to make a decision, spend or close.
Would you get it from either?
I'd feel more comfortable from the state.
For both.
I mean, if we had to put a project or two in there, I guess, but, but I, I mean, I'd like some stipulation that it would be. That you would have, you would have to spend some of that money to, to promote redevelopment before it could be spent on, on repaving Schofield Ave, for example.
I think Schofield Ave, what is that, she's not here, but what would that impact the taxpayer for the three and a half million if it wasn't in the TIP?
I believe she said thirty cents.
So, okay, so now let's think about this, really, nine cents to close the TIP is gonna go against, but thirty cents is gonna cost to do the road.
No matter what.
So really, what, what do we, what do we, this is dollars and cents.
But is it, is it nine, here, here's, is it nine cents a year for the next ten years? So ninety cents versus thirty cents?
Or is it only nine cents because we have staff salaries part of the. Part of the mix, so it'll only nets nine.
And, and we'd have to figure out how to spend the money too. So, I mean, if you look at something easy, maybe not something block, but like Lay Northwest, I would think if somebody reached out to QuickTrip and said, let's get this moving. I know they've got some restraints on it, you know, probably no gas, no petrol, no convenience store, of course, but boy, that's a great corner when you think about it.
My understanding is that somebody in town has it listed on their site.
Yep.
But it hasn't been sold.
Right. Well, and QuickTrip is actively trying to sell it. They, they bought it for control because they thought another corner was gonna be a petrol.
Which property is that?
Lay Northwest.
Across the street was corner first.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Smart, smart what they do.
Yeah, very smart. They, they controlled the corner. So just to.
So in deference to the staff and to get on to other things, and can we just pull the commission members to see if we are in fact in favor of doing something to. Create an amendment with, assuming that, you know, and again, I'm gonna preface it by saying we're gonna take everything that's not on Schofield Ave out. And work on some, have staff work on something that will focus on development with the idea that reconstructing Schofield Ave would come after some, some period of time.
Can we do that?
To see if in fact something. There's a suggestion in the documentation about some of the language that could be used, if you go further down, it doesn't necessarily have to be a motion to approve a new plan. It just says, support the reconsideration of project plan amendments to TID to limiting the project scope to development or redevelopment incentives. Purchase properties, if you want to scratch that out, you can leave that one out. And it also says, add infrastructure, you can also scratch that one out. So it could be just as short as support reconsideration of project plan amendments or TID to limiting project scope to develop redevelopment incentives.
Period, and we have to April to put this together or.
We're pretty good on it.
Yeah, to get it, yeah.
Pardon? Need to bring back a draft of what we're thinking, I would think, and then conduct.
So Roy's, I think Roy or Gary had a thought of, is this gonna, would it even fly if a motion was made? And with that thought, that we would just be considering moving forward and considering an amendment to.
Yeah, all, all, all we're asking for is, do you want us to go and draft a revised TID two project plan amendment? Under the parameters that we all line, or if you wanna say something different, that's fine. But we need the directive to go if that's what you want us to do. Otherwise, you know, the other, we, we discussed what the other option is.
Yes, it's alternatives, so.
Gary? So Keith, I've got some, I guess I will say that I want to make the best decision for our citizens and for our community. So I would ask staff to come back with actual facts of how many cents it is and taking payroll out of it. So we can make an educated decision here, if, once you bring the draft back to us, if you're gonna bring a draft, if that's what happens, I think Joe wants a poll of how many people would, would be in agreeance with it. But we want actual numbers. I want, I wanna make a business decision, not a blind decision, of the three and a half million dollars, what that's gonna be if we close it versus, you know, what it, what it's gonna take to, to, uh. If it's nine cents versus thirty cents, I want the true number, I want the actual numbers.
The numbers that we had estimated for public hearing.
Well, I understand it, but Gail's asking if it had employees involved, then nobody can answer that. I want that clarified.
What, what, what's the, what's the question?
So, the, right now, you charge staff time to the TID.
Right.
So is the nine net of employee staff time or is it gross?
We included this, I believe they included the staff going back onto the general tax rule.
Yes.
So like the portion of me that's funded on TID two would go back to the general tax.
This is an extra payroll being charged to the TID. It's, it's, it's the existing payroll, but you're able to take a percentage of it and move it over to TID because they are working on projects, I mean, on, on the TID. So it's not additional payroll. I think there was some misunderstandings in some of the meetings on that.
But I think what happens is if you say close the TID, then that, we don't have extra employees doing it. It's, it's their time, it would go back on the general taxes and that dollar amount is gonna have to be, I mean, absorbed. So, I mean, yes, it's gonna cost you because now it's no longer charged to TID, it's charged to, so our taxes.
I need a justification in order to tell somebody why I made the decisions I did. I'm, I'm for development, right? We need development in order to help our taxes.
Yep.
But I also need to make a, a fiscal, a proper fiscal decision to make sure that I can justify my reasons behind it. So I want accurate numbers.
Here's the, here's the number that was discussed at the public hearing, would bring back, if we close it, it brings back sixty-four thousand two hundred dollars to the general tax levy. The tax rate would drop, assuming we don't maintain the levy at the same, well, drop by nine cents per thousand. Uh, estimated of that sixty-four thousand two hundred, forty-six thousand four hundred is administrative, estimated as administrative costs for. Staff salary allocation, so it's hard, whatever other administrative costs might be there. So in that additional benefit to general operations was seventeen thousand eight hundred dollars.
Well, I, I just, and, and, you know, this, this might get a little ugly here, but we're only talking about the, the Weston portion. We're not even talking about the school district or Marathon County.
This is, yeah, that's all.
Or the technicals.
This is all I would comment.
And, and we're about twenty-three percent of the tax bill.
There's something.
Well, I just, I'm just trying to get to a point, I'm just gonna say this, just so everybody's clear on this, so that we don't get asked later. So the nine cents that we're gonna bring back, that we're gonna save Weston, would that also, could you quadruple that? Since we're only twenty-three percent of the equation, wouldn't, wouldn't it be just fair to say that there's nine cents, nine cents, and nine cents? That's gonna go to other taxing entities?
It'd be allocated through higher tax.
Because they're not able to tax me now.
I don't think it would be anywhere near that amount.
It wouldn't be?
I, I, that's a question that you want us, that you want to be.
I, I think that's another question. I'm just thinking that, you know, it's kinda like the bus service is a hundred and fifty grand, while the state's paying four hundred and fifty grand. Truly, the Weston bus service is six hundred thousand, and, and nobody ever talks about the state's side, and that's, that's the crap of it. I just wanna make sure we're talking about the right thing.
Apples to apples.
Yep, if we're gonna.
That's what I want, I want, I don't want nothing.
Actually closes, and we, and we get nine cents back, are we only twenty-three percent of the tax? And there's seventy-five percent still out there. We can't answer right now, but I'd like that, I think that should be one of the answers, one of the questions answered. Roy?
And I'm gonna move a little bit off topic for you, if that's okay. I just, one of my thoughts is, we're talking about lots that can't be developed because of existing buildings and the cost of demolishment, getting it back to a greenfield. Is there gonna be a conceptual thought of going to those property owners and saying, we as the village of Weston will incur the cost today to demolish said building? You sign an agreement with us that if you sell this in the next five years, we recover those costs at that point from proceeds from the sale. And if you don't sell it within five years, we'll add it on to your assessment or something like that.
Have the crew do the demolition.
Yeah, that's what Husheng was saying. You know, I mean, that, I mean, when we're talking about the road reconstruction of what, three point five, would it behoove us to put another five hundred thousand on there to do ten properties at fifty grand? I don't know, but I mean, if, if they knew that and they could market that, that way, if you could market, everybody that had those properties could market it saying, it's gonna be demolished. That, that would be an incentive.
I think the property goes better if it's ready to build up.
Right.
Right, I agree. That's why I said you approach them upfront and just say, we'll incur the cost today, when you sell, we recover that cost.
Oh, I see.
Right?
I'm not sure what, all the gallons there was doing there, I guess, again, this gets back to what the TID.
I don't either, I just.
TID development, redevelopment was.
For the TIS for.
Right.
So, so what would happen in, in Joe's case, with the tearing down of this building, what was, what's your building assessed at right now? Well, it's already been taken off the tax roll, the building itself. Off the general tax roll. Yeah, so the current value of the property is negative, isn't what is, you know, and, and so the reality is, what I paid for it, I could come back to the village and ask them to reduce my taxes by half. And that, you know, I mean, that would be the, I, I bought it at a discount because the owner couldn't sell it to anybody for any price. You know, and, and he just wanted to be done with the, with this albatross for him. So at this point, I'm using it for storage, my own personal stuff, but the reality is if somebody came along that could really use the property, I, I mean, that's, that's the impediment. Well, it was, part of it was what it was used for previously, the, the concern about, uh, what's it gonna cost to clean up the property? I think that we have a clean bill of health from REI now for both properties. So that, that's off the table now, that's not an issue anymore. Right, but if we were to do what Roy is proposing, I'm a property owner, and you tear down your building, what is it, diminish the value I have? Again, what I'm saying is, is that, that.
Increase the value.
Increase the value.
Yeah, so for me, so for me right now, the reality. So for me, so for me right now, the reality is, I wasn't using it myself. I could rent it to somebody just for storage, as long as everything is kept inside the building. The village has no objection based on the ordinances today, you know, so you're not operating a business or doing something like that. So there's, there's revenue there for me to be had by leaving the building standing just from renting space. You know, so whether it's both storage or whatever, you know. So tearing the building down is a distance set up to me until I know that there's something that, where I could get a fair price for the property. So I'd be not inclined to do that because the reality is I could probably generate thirty or forty thousand dollars in, in storage off of that, you know, out of that building right now. And still stay within the village's zoning guidelines. Costs for taxes.
Right.
So we want to take a poll?
It's our, yeah, let's do a poll.
It can be done as a consensus if you want, if you, if you don't want to make a formal motion, it can be done as a consensus to give staff direction.
So who's inclined out of the seven, not, not Husheng and I? Who's inclined out of the seven to make an amendment at, at a much, much less faction? So that's four, five, five, and then opposed would be one, two, all right? Opposed would be Gail and Steve, mine out. All right. So is that, there? Or do we want to give some direction?
I think the staff has heard from, I think Gary, like I said, quite a few guys are in favor of doing something. I think the staff has heard what the expectation would be.
I think the most important thing is that we know that we got to maximize our efforts as much as we can upfront to move, 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 and try to get opportunities in front of us.
We only have.
I just, I.
Only have so much time.
Approaching property owners the same, okay? We're going to work with you to get to a green field.
I know.
Generate a sale, right? That'll, it could result in development.
Don't tease me.
I, I just want to, I guess.
Free candy.
I'm totally not opposed to seeing an amendment that comes in front of us that we can all wrap our heads around. But right now, I just feel like I don't have enough information to really make.
Questions that have to be answered.
Yep.
Okay. All right, I think we beat that to death. Let's move on to six, Weston Avenue design concept.
So we have AECom engineering firm working on the design of the Weston Avenue reconstruction from County X to County J. We want to schedule a public informational meeting. Before we do that, we have a, we've reached a thirty percent plan level that Michael and I talked to them about last week. And a couple of main things related to the typical cross section of the street. And then what we are willing or what we may want to consider in terms of utility special assessments. There are two main topics that came up as this was discussed, I think, last time we brought it to the commission. It was back in October and I think, we talked about this a little bit more. So I don't, I think, I think some of these things are more technical related and that is intuned to some of the technical things on the street cross section. So Michael, if you're able to and wanting to, if you could kind of walk through the questions and some of your perspectives on the typical section.
Yeah, I guess one of the things that came up when we were talking with Zach Larson from AECom, I guess the direction was from essentially County Highway X to Ryan Street that would carry a two-way left turn lane through the entire corridor. You know, as they kind of analyzed that, I guess, you know, they weren't saying there was necessarily a huge need for it based on projected traffic counts. They wouldn't necessarily go against having it, but I, I guess they wouldn't necessarily advocate that it absolutely needs to be in there. As we look at right-of-way needs throughout the corridor, I guess that twiddle adds, you know, fourteen feet of pavement, an extra fourteen feet of right-of-way we'd need to purchase. You know, as we talk about planning for the future there too, we don't necessarily know what's going to come. And it might be, you know, we, we guys just talk about Schofield Avenue and what happened over the last thirty years. You know, thirty years from now, Weston Avenue may look completely different and, you know, the pavement life is probably going to be close to needing to be replaced. Is it a better time to, you know, kind of maybe wait on some of the expanded pavement until we know exactly where future developments are? We can always add turn lanes at existing intersections such as here in Von Kennel, Ryan Street itself, Zinzer. You know, or if there's even future planned ones that we know of coming down the line, we can incorporate those. But adding that throughout the whole corridor, they're just questioning if that was something we wanted to do or if we want to kind of keep it narrowed up with this, with this project in its current state. You know, there's questions about widths of the clear zone, it's a space between the multi-use path and the road. And then also some questions about the, you know, do, do we want to try to jog the road so that, you know, maybe there's some slight curves in it? So we're not taking the road through somebody's house? I mean, it's, it's maybe a slight deflection of ten feet, fifteen feet off center, just so we're, you know, not necessarily going to have to go by a property because the road's going to be right in somebody's front door.
Are we primarily talking from Ryan to Camp Phillips?
Yeah, I mean.
An acquisition, because if my memory serves me correct, is, isn't like Zinzer to J going to remain two?
It's going to remain two. You know, there's maybe some spots where there's.
The water is a huge issue.
Yeah. So I guess here, maybe this is an easier way to look at it.
Mike, I don't mean to interrupt you, but as, in sitting in all the plan commissions, there was, in fact, I think Stephen's the one that wrote up, why is there a consideration to do the western part first as opposed to the eastern part?
The, the main reason for that is from Ryan Street out to Highway J, the village of Weston already owns the north side of the road except for, I believe it's four properties, five properties. So as far as acquiring any right-of-way, we already own it.
Yeah, I, I get that, but it, it, as far as the discussions that were had at the plan commission was, I, I feel, I can only speak for myself, having been at the meetings, but the impression was to go from Camp Phillips Road to Ryan first and then do the other stuff later. At least that's my understanding.
It's the logistics of purchasing right-of-way.
I, I understand that. I'm just trying to convey what the thought was of the plan commission.
My, my point also is the need right now is not to J. The need is from Ryan to Camp Phillips. That's where we're having the issues with semis and trucks and, and getting on and off. Nobody wants anybody to go on the north side of Ryan. Nope, none of the trucks want to go down to the Camp Phillips and Schofield Avenue intersection because it's hell. So, so if we're going to do that first, how far does that put back Ryan to Camp Phillips? Two, four years, what?
The thought process is, the, the whole corridor is being designed at the same time.
Right.
It's just because of that extra year of right-of-way, we can keep moving forward with the construction of the east while those right-of-way transactions on the west side are being completed. So.
So while the construction from Camp J to Ryan, Zinzer, whatever, Ryan, the, the same time, you're going to be land acquisition.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Not actually losing time.
Well, it, it's a way to get it done as, essentially as quick as possible.
So I'm extending it for another, I'm just trying to make sure that the plan commission understands what, what I thought that they were talking about.
Yeah.
Do we need to speak to, to get a hurry to develop road that we don't have a need for, right? I guess that's the.
I, I mean, there is some water utility looping that, you know, on the east side, we run into issues. You know, the whole Business Park South is fed off of one crossing of County, you know, or State Highway twenty-nine. You know, when we're trying to flush our water mains, there's a lot of water pressure issues there. Same thing over with Country Fresh Meats on Highway J. So looping those two water mains so that it can be fed from both directions is, is a, oh, oh, oh. It's a point of emphasis in the utilities master plan of closing that gap in the utility system looping. The payment condition isn't great through there either. We have stormwater issues on the east side there too. So, so I mean, as far as development goes, maybe there's not a lot of properties there. But the infrastructure does have needs on the east side too, you know, to, you know, say that there aren't any needs on that east side. I, I don't think it's accurate.
So I, I meant traffic needs.
Sure, traffic.
I didn't mean road needs.
Yep.
It, it definitely goes against my better judgment to dig something twice. It just rubs me the wrong way.
Yep.
There's no sense to putting in utilities and then digging it up again to do a road off of the top of it.
Yeah.
Oops.
Well, yeah, and I guess that's a thought is, you know, what, what is the right size going to be? Nobody's got a crystal ball of what this thing looks like. But, you know, you know, what, what is the lesser of two evils there? Do you overbuild a road and then you go, oh geez, we're maintaining this roadway now and we didn't need to overbuild it? Or, you know, or do you underbuild it then? Okay, well, you know, we've got a traffic issue. I, I think I put it in there, you know, Ross Avenue carries, I think it's like almost seven thousand vehicles a day. You know, it's two lanes, you know, you know, it's got the bike lanes. The Weston Avenue projection in twenty thirty-six was, you know, about thirty-five hundred vehicles. So about half of what Ross Avenue currently carries, so.
Well, that's an easy, easy, let's move on.
Yeah, so, so I guess those are the questions. And we just want to make sure we're all in agreement here because the direction was put in the two-way left turn lane. So I, I don't want to come back to you guys with a, a design that all of a sudden you're telling me that that goes against what we told you to go do.
Yeah, and we're not doing this, this, when we had that person here from, I don't know what, what Coopie is with, but I mean, he's, you know, all the verification, all the inside mediums and all that stuff, no, right?
No, there'll be a, a slight median from the max for about five hundred feet to the east and then median's gone.
I thought we were just quoting them at intersections.
Okay.
That's what I thought, so I apologize.
No, that's fine, we can.
Michael, all the issue with DNR is done?
Uh, the wetlands were delineated. They're hoping to have a meeting with them in January here, right after the first of the year.
Then you should work on it with the design and get those.
Correct.
To work out with them.
Yep.
And also I strongly recommend you put the bicyclists on the road.
Yeah.
On that, on that multi-purpose lane.
There'll be room for on, on pavement bike lane and then also a multi-use path.
There shouldn't be in there, it's against the law. And also that road being used by the YMCA bicyclists significantly. And it's not one or two of them, they go as a group, they probably pass your house.
Yep.
So in that ten feet is not enough for them and it's creating more problem. They should be on the road and that road, the, the pavement area, that multi-purpose should be only for pedestrians.
Sure.
So how much wider to, to take care of the bicycles, how much more?
And what do we?
Each side.
Four feet each side?
Yes.
Four feet each side for five months?
It's, it's also, it's a recommended to have a paved shoulder for the roadway anyways. So if we have a five-foot paved shoulder, that'll.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Husheng, I'm, I'm sorry. There's a lot of areas to bike and you don't need to bike on a, on a truck route.
I am completely in agreeance with Mark on this.
I mean, we're going to make this thing, oh, jeepers.
We'll be making the ten feet wide multi-purpose lane.
You know, we have, we have no truck traffic on some roads. I honestly think we're going to get to a point where we have no bike traffic.
Then you should put a sign on there that says no bicycles.
Well, I don't think there's one out there yet, but I think on a road, you know, somebody's going to have to do it and then take the wrath for it. But on a truck traffic for business and to try to expedite, you know, that stuff, I mean, my God, just because it's a road doesn't mean you have to, you know, have to bike on it. So I am obviously not a biker, so I don't fit in, I don't fit in.
I thought at one point in time, we, we talked about not having bikes on Weston Avenue and designating Shorey as being a bike path.
Well, I, I don't know if that's ever been tackled anywhere.
They do, they come up Shorey and then they hit Ryan Street.
Well, that's, that's enough.
Be on each side, so.
I, I shouldn't have brought it up. All right.
No, we can put a sign on there, we can tell the YMCA, hey, tell you're a biker, they cannot go on Weston Avenue.
Either way, I guess, based on arterials, you know, which this is and the speed limit, there would be a paved shoulder of five to six feet, which would be the bike lane, you know, so it's not like we're building extra pavement for the bikes, they would just use that paved shoulder, so.
Okay, let's move on.
All right.
So we're done at six, correct?
Well, the other issue that is, I don't know, when we go to this public information meeting, there's going to be questions about special assessments, what are we doing with our utilities? So, you know, there's reasons that we want that the utilities benefit the system as a whole, looping, some oversizing. And then obviously people will have the ability to get service. So we were thinking along the lines of something similar, what was done on Apache Lane where we, there are existing homes and we would establish a connection fee, thought as, say, a two-hundred-foot, basically about two-hundred feet of length of the, the base cost for the water main, which would be typically eight-inch diameter, sewer main, eight-inch diameter. Similar what we'd have on the Apache Lane area and use that as the, that would be assessed. As with Apache Lane, we would allow that to be deferred until they want to connect. Again, I don't know that we, that we talked about, whether we even like encourage connection because we really are, I think, more interested in seeing some redevelopment or development along there that, that if, if those places were to connect, their, their connection would be based on that same base principle.
We talked pretty heavily about defer, the first couple nights when we had.
A room for.
Yeah.
That was, was to sell.
And try to capture the money when they sell.
Yep. I think that's a good, um, standard to have a two-hundred-foot maximum and then that's it. And if it's subdivided, then each, each parcel that has access gets that two-hundred-foot maximum.
If it's direct access, yeah, but.
Yeah.
Action, but.
And, but if, and if a subdivision goes in, of course, they would have to run the, the utilities in and there'd be connections off of there, which would kind of make it a moot point.
Right. In that case, probably just one connection.
So if a developer comes in and splits that, however many feet that is in the twenty lots, they would pay the connection fee times, or it would be two-hundred feet times twenty, correct?
If they would have.
New assessment, if that's, if that's what plot sizes were.
I wouldn't just, I wouldn't expect that they, we, we probably won't want to see a twenty lots of real on Weston Avenue.
Well, I, I understand, I'm just saying methodically.
Right. But yeah, I guess that would be a theory if they were divided, then yeah.
Yeah.
But somehow, Keith, let's just say you have an internal, and, and they're the, them are the back properties faced up Weston Avenue.
Yeah.
But the subdivision's got utilities, how are you covering the access?
I would think that you would, I guess, based on what we're thinking, there would be a, you would have a connection fee for your one location.
Your feet.
Or whoever it would be, and then you have cost or the developer has cost within their development, they'd have to take care of all that.
But let's take an example of Gary Buckberger's property there, I think he'll say he's got a thousand feet there.
Yeah.
Right, you're going to give them two hundred feet.
Correct.
Yep.
Right, so you got eight hundred, eight hundred feet that's not covered.
Well, if he, I guess we would qualify it in the assessment report then that if they were to divide it with direct and with the intention of getting direct access, then I suppose we would charge them.
So let's just take this thousand feet, right? He's going to pay two, we got eight hundred left. They're going to put a road in there. The developer comes, he's going to put a road in there and it's all internally fed with its own sewer and water. Those happen to back, those are the backyards facing Weston Avenue. We've got eight hundred feet, how are we covering eight hundred feet?
Yes, we wouldn't, we would, we would have that as a, it would still be, that would be the.
That'd be under a T.
Looping costs of the utility or.
Additional revenue from utilities from the sewer water. Granted, it would take forever to get it back.
Well, that's what I'm, I was just trying to reference a situation like that where.
But I think we're going to be, we're trying to look at not financially bankrupt somebody for.
Yeah, no, I get it.
A thousand-foot front end of. Is required under statute to defer assessment for any agricultural, any, any land that's in prop land preservation or fireland preservation.
Is he required under statute to defer assessment for any agricultural, any any land that's in prop land preservation or farmland preservation anyway? Or managed forest or things like that, there's already exemptions in there that we have to talk for. Doesn't mean that we, we we have to defer them. But we, you know, it doesn't mean that they're, they wouldn't. So they fall under the same kind of scenario.
You say that that farmland um preservation is different than agricultural use?
Yeah, it's a, it's a program that you enroll your land in through the state, uh, isn't it?
Which.
And and how many acres or how many, how much frontage along Weston Avenue is in that program?
I don't know that answer right now. I, we could go get it very easily. We'll have it for, we can have it for the meeting. If we schedule a meeting of this.
Okay.
What's the approximate cost per foot right now?
Uh, it's like ninety-eight dollars is what I believe.
Proposed as the assessmo- assessable rate level?
Yeah.
Is that the, that's, that's the base cost of the eight-inch, right?
Correct.
Eighteen thousand. The sewer and water together?
For sewer and water combined.
I'll I'll just say I'm in favor of following the Apache land. Methodology, I don't know what anyone else's thoughts are.
Yeah. I agree.
I would agree.
That would be mine.
I would agree.
Okay, six.
So then the other, the only other thing is that we wanna schedule this public information meeting.
I think we need.
I don't think you wanna, I don't think you wanna do this during a regular plan commission night, so I would think maybe the last week of January would be logical.
But I think we need to make it clear when we have these public informations, what exactly and and make sure we have all the numbers. This is what what the plan is because sometimes we get. Sometimes the public gets a hold of a number that's that's floating out there that's not correct. And and that could be rough for staff if we rough for us and and we're trying to figure out what, what are we talking about? When we talk about numbers back and forth, all of a sudden they've got four or five numbers that are ahead, which one is the right one? But I would assume that would get uh laid up specifically in the public hearing or the public informational assessment. So they're clear about what we're talking about. We'll have to try to be. We always try to explain that it's a, you know, we're at an estimating stage. I mean, we can jack the estimate way up, I guess that's not gonna make. That's not gonna get people very much satisfaction either, but.
I know I'm speaking.
Thank you.
Higher, but.
Thank you.
Okay. And then, in terms of right-of-way acquisition, special assessments are two separate issues. We would have to handle right-of-way acquisition under eminent domain. Process and, you know, assessments as a separate public hearing, so.
So, for me, the explanation that Michael had about why you would start on the eastern end first, after you explained about right-of-way acquisition, makes sense. Beforehand, it didn't.
I I agree.
I just, I have changed my opinion.
Alright, so I guess.
Who says you can't change?
Do we wanna, do we?
I change my mind all the time.
Do we wanna select the date? Do we wanna use the twenty?
I like January.
The twenty-fifth of January, is that?
You'll listen to me again.
We'd be, we'll probably wanna have that, have it there, yeah.
Yeah, okay, good.
Is that done?
It was January thirty-first.
January thirty-first, okay.
It was the fifth.
Is that, what night is that?
It's a Monday.
Okay.
It's the fifth Monday of the.
January what?
Thirty-first?
I would be here, but.
You'll send out a, you'll send out a, save the date, don't undo it a week earlier.
Special assessment hearings, we have public works committee, one of the guests.
We got one that came in.
Is there any opposition to do it that week earlier?
Oh, I don't. Any thought on the week earlier?
It's in that. I was gonna say.
Super Bowl?
I just won't be here if you do the thirty-first.
Sure, wait, see if that will work. We don't have any, isn't that abnormal?
Like, are.
Meeting night?
Of course.
Ah, they don't do anything appropriately.
Of course. Why don't we just check both things? Just check both things.
You give me a, yeah, I mean.
The week prior to thirty-first. You know, he's sitting right here. He's.
I can hear.
Oh, okay, well, I'll spread the the.
It's just, it's just very abnormal for him to do that. For to, you know, to say that about another committee.
Oh, heck.
So six is done?
Yeah, sure, sure, unless you have other questions about it.
Okay.
It's only because.
Let's move on, seven. Propose amendments to chapter fourteen, building and addressing regulations, A two thousand seventeen, two thousand twenty-one permit statistics. They're two things or one?
The statistics were just furnished after I met with planning and development and just asked, you know, for, buy us some statistics, cause trustee Minella had some questions about.
Okay.
What he thought the impact of these proposed amendments would be. There's no proposal to create new fees unless the board wishes to do so. So historically, that's what the permit activity's been. And unless people's behavior changes or we have a lot more new development, we probably wouldn't expect it to be much different. You have any, is that a fair statement?
That is a fair statement. Page ninety-two has the permit total.
Ninety-two?
Ninety-two?
Yeah.
Good.
So Roman put these together based off of, well, you can explain it.
So, our new permitting system that we put in place in twenty seventeen allows us to farm data out of the system. Um, we've got the last five years totals in there based on the the form that each permit uses. So you see our totals down at the bottom, highlighted in blue. And um. The uh. I'm here to specific, um, some of the highlights though, um, twenty twenty-one, if you wanna go down to twenty twenty-one, Michael. Our commercial. Building fees, I should say valuation, was the highest we've ever had in the last five years.
Twenty-one was?
Twenty-one was, over twenty-eight million in valuation based on totals that are, you know, put into the permit system. I don't know what.
Wait, wait, twenty-one valuation is how much?
Valuation added based on what we have in the system is twenty-eight million.
Okay, so it's forty-five.
I I got forty-five million.
Building fees.
I I got building fees of one fifty-seven for twenty-one.
You're talking about commercial?
You look at the bottom line or you're looking? He's looking at a line item.
You told me ninety-two, ninety.
Go to page ninety-four.
Uh, I went to ninety-four, that's where I am.
He's looking at a line item. Are you looking at the bottom line?
Yes.
The second line is.
Look at the.
You're looking at the bottom line.
Yeah, okay, gotcha, gotcha.
Commercial building.
After exception, okay?
That one, yeah, yeah, foot involved, help me take a page.
Does that include um, does that include small municipal projects?
Those are clean.
That includes all commercial projects.
Would it include the municipal center?
That would. That would, if that permit was, that permit was issued in twenty-one. So, yeah, that would include that.
So, it's largely municipal center.
If we go down to.
But that would, that would not be under commercial.
It would fall underneath the commercial, yes.
Cause commercial. It would?
Commercial.
Then it would be in commercial, yep. Yeah, that's right. Well, we had twenty in nineteen and we had.
Oh, when did Everest do their remodeling?
Yeah, uh, that's off the rules, right? They wouldn't get some.
It would be there, it would be permits, wouldn't it? Just like for us.
Oh, yeah, institution, right.
Well, deceiving.
Not, what it's not taxable, we don't get any increment on it at all.
Right. Which would be stupid, reappearing ourselves to get taxes.
So when you say we added, when you say valuation, we added twenty-eight million dollars of value to the village?
On, just on that one line item.
Okay.
So if you go down to the bottom. There's our total valuation added based on what was included on the permits. So when we look at assessed value, that's a a question for Greg.
Some of these don't hit until the following year or the year after they're finished with construction, is that correct? So this is kind of like something that's a moving target.
As always with permits, it is.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's, this really isn't accurate, cause eighteen million or whatever you've got for the municipal center doesn't really.
So I pulled that permit, it has fourteen, it's listed as fourteen.
Fourteen, okay, so.
Square fourteen.
So another twelve in commercial. So there's forty-five million in total valuation with a hundred fifty-seven thousand in fees for twenty-one.
That's what we got, yeah.
Yep, and then then you can go to uh twenty, thirty-two million dollars versus forty-five million. But a hundred eighty-four thousand dollars in fees. What's the, what's the rub there?
Well, um, most of the, most of the projects.
No, that just was actually a couple of thousand dollars, those fees. I dropped that out.
Well, it's like, the permit fees aren't gonna track directly to the uh, estimated value of the.
So it depends on, it depends on where they fall.
It's the type of permit it is.
Okay.
Whatever it is.
Permits are are based, like with commercial permits, for example, it's square footage base, same with electrical permits, so.
What's a WOOPA?
Oh, what?
Those are new homes.
Those are new homes.
Oh.
Uniform.
W U.
Wisconsin building. Building, building permit application.
Wow, okay.
So if you wanna look it up, uh, you know, a number that specifically benefits, you know, tax-based, that's one of them.
I mean, in the packets every month is a more detailed picture of it by. Address, this is just a flyer.
But I'm, I've just never seen years like this. This, this is good information.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to get it out to you guys, cause that's, um, you know, reports that we can run inside of, inside of the system.
Okay.
There is a lot of building going on in the village. There has been on the last four years, five years.
Yep, so I mean, there's definitely an upturn.
Yeah, you don't always see it.
No, you don't, you know, and that's, and this is just what's handled by Scott, myself and and the rest of the planning and development department. This doesn't include, you know, anything for utilities, well permits or anything like that. Those are pulled out because it's not something that our department handles.
Okay. So.
Get back to, to me. Just, I guess, be handy for information.
Right, yep.
Again, there's no proposal unless the board has a desire to add any other permits onto the schedule. Uh, that isn't necessarily the topic tonight. I guess the topic tonight is chapter fourteen.
Correct.
And um.
That should be on.
Yep. I have a question on that. In the process of discussing the addressing with the plan commission, there was discussion about um, an appeal process. And when I went through the, I didn't see that in there. There's a short sentence that talks about. In the, in chapter fourteen, it's about, well, when we go out and put all those address signs, we've had people that complain about, don't like them, they're ugly. Don't like what they are, in particular, the one woman that didn't, that wanted to put it on a, a monument, a stone pillar that she had.
It's in there.
Is it in there?
Mm-hmm, I just opened the page to it that I have.
So what's the.
Tell me where it is.
Uh, fourteen point six zero five underneath the street name and addressing sign, there's a pair and four called alternatives to fire flag sign.
I I apologize, I am mistaken. Probably about the first time.
What, what did you said? I'm sorry.
What page?
I have to look, cause I have a hard copy.
First time. Which page is it?
Six point zero five.
Fourteen point.
So this was actually drafted last spring, so if it's, it starts on page seventy-nine is where that section is. If you go to eighty.
Seventy-nine of the packet.
Yes. Oh, it is actually on seventy-nine.
Eighty, eighty?
It's number three. Well, it's actually not showing on here. This must be the, well, fourth sign. I have in the one that I have on here. There's an alternative, alternative to fire flag sign.
And it's not in this one? Yeah, didn't see it.
Yeah, it's here, I have it. This must be, I must not have grabbed it.
I think that was one of the things we had discussions in plan commission, there wasn't a pathway for someone to appeal the signs. And they wanted to make sure that was in there.
It is.
Okay, I'll trust you.
Um, but we should. Be able to see it, so I mean.
Can you go?
No, I'm saying.
Look at it, I mean, I can pull it up. I'm, I apologize. I mean, this has been.
Um, I would read, I was just trying to read through it here and I don't. I don't see it.
So this would come back for you. You're not gonna approve this version. You would see it one more time before approval.
You have to have a hearing approval. So that's the only thing I found.
I'm missing the language for appeal.
Uh, print it off when everyone can have it.
See?
You're on your game.
You're a little old.
You're on your game.
I need to watch.
So we have another thirty days of being able to try to read this? Go ahead. Okay.
Have any builders or developers been consulted with as far as, um, cause this code goes be beyond the uniform building code, right? This is more stringent than the state code.
No, no, it can't be.
It is a state code.
It is a state code, yeah, adopting the state code and all this. Continuing changes. We cannot by state law be more stringent, either commercially or residentially in codes.
Okay.
I thought I read somewhere in here that if there's. We can do in zoning code stuff, but not in building.
Yeah, so structures.
So, if if there is a issue with the plumbing code, we have to follow plumbing. There's an issue with the electrical code, we have to follow the electrical code. We must cite the code sections that are in violation at each.
So these amendments are state amendments, state changes?
No, I I remember reading. Most of it's adopting the state code for for other structures and remodels.
This is the newer version. We've had this chapter for quite a while and there's been some changes that that haven't been made that we're trying to catch up to as, as far as I understand.
Is that under section fourteen one oh eight, fees and reimbursable costs? Reimbursable consultant costs, so if the village retains services of consultants, they can bill, bill the property owner. That's part of state code?
Or or, no, that's part of the the code. The codes that we cite on, these are. Um, the the workings of the, of our building code that if. Cause we need to recoup something, we need, if if there's a uh. For example, we need to have an evaluation done by a a testing lab on a product that's not listed. Then that the contractor or the uh, the builder or owner would have to pay those fees for the consultant department.
Do you currently do that?
Yes.
Yeah. Tiny seller, we we had them go through.
Well, their light fixture, their light fixture, right?
Yep, yep.
That big one.
It wasn't a listed.
It's not UL listed?
Well, it was handmade, it's one of the.
Correct.
Yeah, so it's, it's a brilliant piece, but it's it's not something that we can approve via code because it's not a listed product.
That was created by Randy?
Yep.
For hassle?
Yeah.
I don't sit, I do, I do not sit underneath it.
Hey, the outside engineer said it was okay for you to sit underneath.
I'm just teasing, of course.
We just had one today where they have to have uh, an independent laboratory come in and inspect the doors, the fire doors on the commercial building.
Okay.
And like a duplex and a property manager cannot put in a water heater. Say they own the property, but they don't live there.
Correct, according to state law, that's what they, the code states that you can only do your own plumbing in your own residential, your primary residential. So if you technically, if you had a lake cottage up north, then that's not your primary residence. According to state law, you cannot do the plumbing there. People do it. Are we gonna, are we gonna poke the bear on some of those? No.
So, yeah, getting back to the whole, there's a promise. A lot of times it's, it's just people, on people's honor for taking the permit, so we don't know that they did or didn't get them, but many cases.
And the other one that struck me is your bathroom has to have a window. Every bathroom has to have a window under HVAC. Every living, sleeping kitchen or bathroom shall have available natural light and ventilation.
Which, which page is that?
Uh, page twenty-two of the code.
Is that bathroom or does it simply say bathroom?
That's cold.
It says bathroom. I have two bathrooms in my house without windows.
Or ventilation. Does it have ventilation?
Yes, but it says shall have natural light and.
It should say and. And.
Oh.
It should say and.
So it's the or, it says and.
It said or.
I'm in violation.
That was a, that was a, a move up on.
I I I have, I'm in violation.
I think that's a reason, cause you don't need a bathroom window.
It says you do here.
Yeah, we'll have to correct.
Easy, Chris.
Fix it.
Fix it.
Wow.
See, someone else was reading, holy heckle.
Next page.
Can't build my house, I want to build my house somewhere.
Next page.
No. That was it, that's it.
So what is it, what is, what is meant when it says the, as permitted by law, it says the village board should designate the electrical inspector as permitted by law. The electrical inspector may designate another employer contractor, correct me if I'm wrong, isn't, isn't the, doesn't the state require? The electrical inspector, plumbing inspector, and I don't know, maybe, maybe the building inspector be licensed by law?
Yeah, they have to be licensed by section, um.
So we really can't designate somebody?
Well, we have in the past, like City Wassa is.
But, but they still have to be. They still have to be licensed.
Licensed.
It's like Corona Water doesn't have a building inspector, they contract with us, so we're there designated, oh, Scott, they're designated electric.
So we would designate someone if we were so busy.
Right.
If a time, if time is, is of the essence, we'd.
Right, but it's still.
Scott ever retired, we have to designate a new one, it's never gonna happen.
We, or we didn't.
We.
We got Corona Water or Wassa when some.
Yeah.
But actually.
Okay. I have a question on page nine, under section fourteen point one point one zero violations, that first sentence didn't make any sense to me. I don't know if there's a typo in there or something, maybe I'm, maybe someone just needs to read it out loud so I can. It's unlawful to construct, alter, relocate, demolish and building, structure or land.
Any, I bet you it's a typo.
Yeah, I'm miss, I'm missing something there.
Yep.
No, but.
Here. You, you just wanted to have something for yourself.
Wow.
You, you.
I did actually read this.
So go ahead and sway that down as Steve found one, okay? All he's got is, I, I will not have one.
I think, yeah.
I, I just kept melting as I kept trying to read this.
Ice melted out of your head?
Out of my drink.
Oh.
Eighty-nine.
So what page would this be on the packet?
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two?
Thank you.
I'm just gonna put S C on that page.
Sticky note.
Sticky note.
Listen to the recording.
Is this, um, so this is going to come back to us, so right now we're just looking for items, so we, this is not actionable tonight, correct?
Right.
Uh, no, I think it is.
I think it's a.
No, the direction, it's direction, if you want to take it for a public hearing, because there are pieces of the zoning code and the subdivision ordinance that have to be amended.
Direction.
Yeah. So seven is not actionable, it is, or is?
Which is other than set the hearing.
That's set the hearing, right.
Well, we just want, I mean, we don't want to take the time to set up the hearing if you guys.
Mm-hmm. If we have more stuff, yep, okay.
Right, okay with it, I mean, you can still make changes at the hearing, but.
What, what do we have for a, just an S, an ETA for a hearing, how long, how far out yet? If we do it in.
January.
In January, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sure, January is always an easy month. Didn't we have somebody bring up?
That telecommunications tower or system, and one of our.
Yeah, that was, um, Patriot Auto, Jim.
Yeah.
And it's telecommunications, like a.
Definition.
Yeah, telecommunications centers or like a cell site or.
Because on page.
On page what?
Page sixty-two, um, B three, it says any solar, solar.
Solar.
That system and plumbing, electrical, HVAC system associated with the alternative energy system or telecommunications tower, telecommunications tower or system.
What page is that on the?
Six.
Uh, sixty-two.
Sixty-two?
Or page nineteen.
Nineteen.
Packet.
Yeah, but sixty-two of the, of the whole thing.
Yeah.
Okay. And B what, B T?
B three.
Yep.
Three.
I mean, I'm just. Just pointing out that we're gonna hear from them again, if we don't.
Full call.
Full or HVAC.
Just telecommunications.
Full mount pack.
There you go.
System.
Or system, I, I understand that, but.
But to see if. When the.
Is there a system, man? I think Jim pointed out that does that include your ring doorbell, because that is a communication system.
Wait, there'll be more than you, just somebody cited now.
Right.
Well, technically your cell phone could be considered a community, because it can be a hotspot.
I don't. I don't know if you have to put a value in there or something to, I mean, I know what you're meant, the towers, but.
Yeah, so battery operated items would not be covered under the electrical code, but if it's connected to the power grid, it's covered.
Of course.
What about? So.
Wireless solar cameras.
If it's solar powered.
I'm just saying, yeah, I.
If it's, if it's.
Wireless, solar powered.
I think we should find a.
I'm trying to figure it.
Deleting that.
A lot of this was taken out of the state.
So like.
Codes too, like for the electrical systems.
Yeah.
That was all taken right from the state S P S three sixteen.
Oh, we can't even in there and just be prepared to talk to Jim when he comes in.
So, I mean, would you consider?
Talking to people all the time.
For conversation sake, would you consider a, a satellite dish on the roof, a telecommunications device?
Could be, could be.
Right, it's required to be grounded and bonded for the electrical code. So that's where, that's why, that's why it's system.
It's also covered how it's anchored, is it not? How it's secured to the structure?
As far as, um.
Safety?
Safety goes, yeah, I mean, that's, those are standards that are set in place by, you know.
Do you need to have a permit to put one of these up? No? Okay. Gail asked.
Put if you want, we're coming to talk to you.
Yeah. I asked Gail to ask.
I don't want to get in trouble. Too late, I put up like four already.
Maybe we could.
Cost you.
Could always define it in the.
I do T D S.
In the code section, what the, what the standard telecommunications power system is.
I, I don't know how to, I'll take it out, I'm just pointing it out.
Yep, yep.
Article eighty-one.
Yeah, you see, you run it up, well, if we keep talking about this, I'm gonna find one.
You, you have another month to work.
Okay, so, um, are we gonna set a date? Is that what we're gonna do?
I presume the next plan.
The next plan question.
Uh, so the second Monday of January.
Yes.
Correct the bundle?
The January.
Okay.
Should we, what, my last question, um, we have a certificate of occupancy for change of use, I think we're. I mean, I've heard from people complaining about having to have inspections if they change their tenant, their commercial tenant. Um, I don't know if people want to talk about that or not, or if we still want to leave it there, other communities don't, we have an occupancy permit.
Um, which page is that on?
Um, uh, commercial only, not residential.
I think it was.
So do you have to, yes, residential?
I don't think you have to, I can start rather.
Yeah.
It has, I think the main reason is because it ha, it can deal with changes, changes in occupancy that produce a different hazard.
Well, I think two of those, changing, you know, our assessor tells me that when they, when they make. Add personal property in the, uh, in the, uh, in the commercial space or whatever, if they, if they remodel it, those are.
Yeah, but you're gonna need a permit for that, what I'm saying is that I've had people.
What's that?
So will they get a permit?
Well, I know, but residential, will it? I try not to.
I thought you were talking about commercials.
Yeah, I was, I was talking about this here, right?
It's with the change of use, more so than anything, I guess it's a.
Do you remember?
But would, would that get caught? I mean, how often does a safer come around?
Once a year, twice a year.
Twice a year, yeah.
Commercial is twice a year.
Commercial is twice a year.
And you read on iPhone, panel covers missing, um, electrical panels and things like that, you know.
Open circuit box.
G F C I outlets that don't function.
On, on a change of.
On a change of use, yes.
Yeah, but I, I was, I know that if it's different than what other communities are doing, I'm just wondering if we're making work for us, it's, it's under ninety-four point eight one three paragraph three where it says no building located.
Page. Is that on that?
Page eighty-seven, chapter seven.
So, I'm sure that if you look at everybody's code, it has that in there, they're just not acting.
Maybe they're not enforcing it, Wassa wasn't enforcing.
The reason that we do it is so that we can catch some of the changes that potentially, I mean, we've caught many where they've had to come before you. Because they're not a permitted use by right in that district.
The, one of the things that we had, where they asked, we had somebody that wanted to store fireworks.
Yeah.
And didn't find it out until it was a change.
Well, if they're required, I mean, uh, just in the leases, you can't violate.
Yeah, we would, we would know that though.
Yeah. I'm just saying that other communities, if they're not enforcing it, or if it is there, I'd like, like to find it so that, I mean, I've been really laughed at because of it. So I'm just saying, um. To charge a fee, I don't even know what the fees are, to be honest with you, for, for doing that, but.
Fifty dollars for a zoning permit, and then so it could get occupancy goes along with it.
For me?
Fifty dollars.
Is it fifty?
It's for the zoning permit and the occupancy, it covers what?
If nobody else has a problem.
I, I think the struggle that we have, or that I've heard, and on this is, that when the occupancy is given. They send a letter back to the person that's applying for it, and then they say, talk to the owner of the property and tell them to do this, this, and this. To bring the property up to code before, which would be like dumpster enclosure or asshole.
That should be, to be from village to owner, not through the rental, right?
Well.
Why should the rental have to tell the owner what they have to do?
What if.
We should be telling the owner.
Couldn't it be a provisional lease?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know if I.
We usually do attempt to, if we have the owner's information, we do start pulling them in, Valerie's very good about, she's got the collection of almost all of the property owners and starts pulling them in.
This was probably. Where we just heard some squabble about it, but I think.
How does it even come up? So if, if we have the owner's information, so let's say we don't, how do we know that there's going to be a change in rental at a commercial property?
We don't.
Usually they have to sign from it.
Find it.
I catch a lot there.
You usually find it, um, in particular, the, I think the building, the fire inspector is probably a good source.
Sometimes Marty will find them, otherwise they're asking for a sign from it, and that's the only way that we know somebody's going into a building. We do have a few property owners that will send them our way right away, prior to them leasing to them.
Well, I'm. I'm, I'm, I'm just gonna call on you, I hope you don't mind.
Yeah.
How, how did that happen with you?
With me?
Yeah. I asked. Okay, so, that's the, yeah, okay, right?
A lot of times people ask what they need, like if they're coming from outside the area, what kind of permits do I need in order to open my business?
Okay.
All right. If you're a good business person, you will ask all those questions.
He's a good person. But someone sells their home, you know, residential, and we don't check it between the sale?
Those, those are checked by home inspectors usually, and that's when they find out that they've done.
That's where your home inspector.
Something about, uh, having the permits in place.
Is a home inspector, are they, are they by law, do they have to furnish information to the village or to the municipality?
Well, they don't.
No?
They're talking about inspectors for lending institutions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
You sell your home or buy a home, you gotta have home inspection.
You've done.
And a lot of times when they're doing the processing on the, on the home.
The fight's on.
Title company says, well, you know, the, the assessment didn't show the basement finish, well, somewhere along the line, the basement got finished.
That's, that's what I'm talking, okay.
So, so then.
Yeah, Michael?
So I recently bought a house in the Village Western, and.
You don't live where you live anymore?
I moved.
You're in your permits a half ago.
How many?
About a month and a half ago.
Really?
Okay. But, um, so Greg, you know, when I bought my house, the, the house I moved into had a finished basement. Greg's like, is it true that your basement is finished? Because he can pull up the MLS listing, and I said, yes, my, so he, he's gonna be making a, a point to come back to the house now. So when houses change property, our assessor does follow.
How, how did he know that? I mean, how?
Absolutely.
Who, who told him what?
He looks at that.
Banks, what?
No, Greg looks through.
Greg looks through.
All sales.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
And that's how he adjusts our assessment all, every year, when you see the, the house changed hands.
Doesn't do that.
Recent sale, he talks about recent sales.
He's doing it through this, uh, process of.
Like money management.
Relation.
Money management.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
There you go.
Well, well.
We're still selling, so.
I think, wait till you, or Steve, where, where you probably heard some, how people is there some angst with, when somebody pulls an occupa, or a, a.
A third minute stress.
And then they want the owner of the property to bring things up to the new court or to the current court, I think there were some people that got pretty irritated with it. And they feel like they don't even want to call because it's gonna just cost them more money.
You don't want, yeah, no, I, it, it was kind of poking at it, is what it was, it wasn't that they're, you know.
Only wanted to be a lot to be done or.
Don't ever, I did this, I, I asked the City Wassa, and there was a couple other people asked City Wassa, they said it's, it's in there, but they don't do it because it pisses, pisses people off.
Wow. How come?
Crossroads.
So have we set a date for the next one?
Yeah, let's chop here, ready? Everybody out of the pool.
Talk later.
Okay.
So we got a date, we got thirty more days to look at this, and the date is going to be the second Monday, right?
Makes sense.
Of, okay.
I understand.
Yeah, for the hearing, right? Okay, January what again?
Ten.
Ten, one zero. Thank you for keeping us on task.
I almost did.
Eight, if we move on to eight, propose, propose changes to chapter ninety-four, article thirteen, signs.
Right. So, this was supposed to come forward last month, but attorney E didn't get the comments on revisions, which we now have. Um, I've incorporated some of them that email is in your packet, there's a couple, he made comments, we can discuss if you would like, I. From a staff perspective, did not think they warranted changes, such as he wanted to break out holiday decorations, and I thought it was fine as is. Um, he wanted to regulate number of signs in a farm field, we can discuss that if you wish to do that. Um, so I did make a couple tweaks first on his, um, comments, and those are there. Uh, the biggest change, I did add more clarification as to temporary sign, because I know that starts getting confusing as to if someone has a H frame sign in their residential front yard. Is that temporary if they leave it up for a longer period than thirty, sixty, ninety, but it's temporary in the nature of the sign material.
Uh, right.
The E T Z here also, I wonder to have a discussion on this, because you had a lot of input on the.
Res, rural.
The, the rural, I'm sorry, that, yeah, that.
Yeah.
I just feel like it's, I just want to point, I, I mean, to me, I'm a little uncomfortable trying to proceed when I know that they had a lot of input and they're not here.
That was Mark, so we can share it with him, it'll come back for a hearing.
That, that'd be a good idea, Mark, Mark has a lot of input, a lot of.
I saw like on the farm field thing.
Right, it's a great idea.
Yeah, we can share it with Mark and, um, Milk, they'll be the only ones that have comments on it.
Yeah, Milk. Tom, you still on the board?
Yes.
And then, out of respect for Tom sitting in the room, we'll share it with Tom too. Yeah, yeah.
He's got on me.
We, we know you're here, yeah, oh, okay, all right, he's on the E T Z, okay, never mind.
It would be Randy.
Okay.
Um, other kind of changes from last time, I added back in real estate signs and construction identification signs. I believe I struck those completely last time, but. After just chats with the attorney, leaving those in, um. It's tricky to pull them out without putting them in with every other temporary sign. For those to have justifications of real estates tied to a transaction, not a commercial. Um, I did add for temporary residential zone property signs, um, the request for within thirty days prior to and ten days following any local, state, federal elections. Hosted by the village, any number of signs permitted, maximum area of thirty-two square feet. And maximum height of six feet. As I'm rereading this, I should say, I believe that was for each sign. Uh, instead of total, and I would just wanna clarify that, but otherwise, questions, comments, and so kind of tonight, looking for either more direction, if there's anything else. Plan Commission Village Board would like to see and or sending it to public hearing.
You, where do you think the pain points are gonna be? Where do you think we're gonna get, you know, uh.
Political sign.
Critical, political?
Political sign.
It can be political?
Temporary and political is where the biggest issue, and that's where all the red line is just words on it.
And then do we have teeth?
The temporary.
Do we have teeth that, that we can handle? I mean, do we have scripts that we're gonna recite to people? On why they can or can't have it?
It's basically what we've been saying the last year, you know, we cannot regulate based off of content of the sign. But, you know, if you have a residential law, you can have two signs, as long as combined, they don't go up to more than twelve square feet. As we get closer to the April election, you can start having more signs. But just because your sign says Mark Maloney is the most amazing president, does not mean I can make you take it down.
I thought we talked.
We could bring the all torn down.
There was.
Let's see this.
Evil stuff.
Gil, that'd be false evidence.
Well, it's, it's within, or outside of that thirty days is when you only limit to two, right? Within the thirty days, it's any number of signs.
On, on what parcel?
Residential.
I could have ten on a residential.
If it's thirty days before.
As long as it's three feet from your neighbor too.
What's that?
Has to be three feet from your neighbor's lot line.
Okay.
Um, I guess I, I would like to see that number be sixty days rather than thirty. For both temporary signs, non-residential and residential.
You repeat that, I'm sorry.
Um, I would prefer to see that as a sixty day, sixty consecutive months.
That's fine, I, it's whatever you guys want, that you guys said thirty last time, so if there's a consensus for sixty, we can change it to sixty, that's still an option.
Sixty, I, I think sixty is good too, I agree with you.
By that time, they're probably tripped.
Like September to November.
I didn't see anything in here about suspending a sign from a drone and flying it around the village.
That's not on a property.
Is that, I know, but I can, so I can park my drone fifty feet above Kansas and Schofield Avenue. In, in my lifetime, I will see a drone flying around, trust me, it will happen.
Probably.
Probably.
Yep, yep.
I believe we can bump that to the F A A though.
Yes, we could, uh.
At a certain height, I think at a certain height.
Oh, true, under.
Yeah.
But? Yeah, four hundred feet? Oh, well, that's, you wouldn't really seat at four hundred feet anyway.
Did you want to furnish a copy of attorney E T's opinion on the, on the political side issue for the public hearing and we can.
Are we not adhering to his opinion?
The letter was in the paper.
Are, are we not adhering to his opinion?
Not just saying that's what prompted.
Oh.
Changes in the sign code relative to political side.
Yeah.
Fine as well.
I'm fine, yeah, yeah.
Which out was part of.
Yeah.
Discussion at the public hearing.
Is that the, the letter that's on page ninety-six?
Ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-six. Yeah, it's nine, it starts ninety-six and finishes at ninety-seven.
Ninety-six is his review of the latest, um, revisions.
Yes.
Um, so it's not his. Formal on political signs. I've attached that one in previous, I believe it was in last. Months or, or last.
I don't know, last time it's. And that's a, that's a, aren't that, you may wanna have that.
In the.
When we go to. And because there's gonna be questions about it, no problem.
If you get this updated ahead of when the meeting packet comes out, is there any way that you can mail it out to everybody so we can read through it?
I'm gonna do that for the other one too, chapter fourteen, you can send them out ahead of time.
Thank you.
Cause we're gonna have to have it ready before Christmas anyways. Like next week.
Unless, yeah, cause it's too ready before the.
Not read it over Christmas.
Absolutely, you're a smart.
Screw that.
Anyone's hearing.
Has there been any changes on flags?
Uh, I put, added a definition, um, so.
I see, I see, I see flag pole, I mean, I see a lot of them mounted to trees.
So, that, thank you, that's another one that I added. Um, so under signs permitted without, signs allowed without permits. Under flags, I basically put a definition, just saying that a sh, a flag shall be placed on a flagpole, either ground mounted. Or building mounted and not to exceed eighteen square feet, which is your typical. State U S flag size. Um, so based on that, hanging from a tree, hanging off a deck. On the side of a building would not count as a flag, it would be considered a sign, a banner of sorts, unless Plan Commission Village Board.
Petriotti bumping?
Extend that.
No, I'm just, I'm just, I mean, from, I mean, from Schofield Avenue to home, I'll bet I see four, five, six on a forty-five on a tree. Just, you know, with that little mounting hardware and the flights, it's like this.
But they're on, okay.
So that's okay?
Prename building mounted to, I think it's some of the rubbish, some sort of angled pole.
I've got four neighbors that actually the metal piece is actually inside the tree.
It's grown in. It's better than.
Including, including mine.
Including yours?
Yeah, 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 I was actually quite amazed. I've only been there, what, fifteen years?
Kind of like the yellow.
Uh, the only one?
Yeah.
Stars and Stripes. I actually snowb, snowblowed a path to it today, so I could go and get it when it gets tamed up. My wife doesn't like it, snow on her.
Is it lighter than you?
No, it's not lighter. Nope.
Supposed to be, is it?
Yep.
At night.
But I got one tree with four strands of fifty foot, like this, like a blue. Yep.
I like that blue.
Yeah, I just, I have all my Christmas in front of the house, and then on the corner, I have a blue one, it was just like, it's like a beacon.
So is there any other comments on sign code?
I ju, I just worry about, you know, and, and if there's no pain points where we have no problems with who we have to call, who's gonna. You know, I just, I guess I don't wanna see Keith out there getting the winter time of, what, taking, trying to put one back up. And it's the most swearing I've ever heard him at one, on a cell phone. I said, who's this? Who is this? It's Keith, okay. Anyway.
What was he doing?
He always had a little, little, little problem with a sign. Some officers took it down and. He might have put it back up, yeah. Anyway, okay. All good there? So that's gotta go to hearing two.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so done with eight, we're on miscellaneous. Any announcements from Plan Commission?
Any, any announcements for Plan Commission?
Yep, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
None?
Yes, a question, are we gonna have three hearings in, uh, January?
Probably.
Two.
Two.
No, three.
Three.
Yeah, it'd be three, ninety-four, fourteen. And then, uh.
Fourteen technically doesn't go, it would be the components of ninety-four that are in connection with.
Oh.
So, it'll be done at the same time, so you've seen it before, there's pieces, so it's an ordinance, so we'll have the full document of chapter fourteen. That, if we didn't have to do anything in chapter ninety-four and seventy, you could just approve it at the board level.
Would that be at the Western line?
Yep, I, I, yes or no, on a tent, will the tent be here?
It'll be here.
Here. Husheng, the tent will be here.
Okay.
And the thirty-first or the week before will be at Dale's. That's for ten two, correct? That's for ten two. Yeah, fair, okay. Okay. Miscellaneous, any announcements from the trustees?
I have none.
None, none, Yi, Barb, Husheng. You?
Are we having a village board meeting next Monday?
Yes. Yes. Yes, we are.
Yeah, why not?
Will not be in attendance? Maybe?
I'll, I'll talk.
Let me know. Steve?
Nothing.
Nothing for you? All right, uh, top, top, full attention. We're done? Okay. So I just wanna bring this to everybody's attention here. The Village of Weston was awarded, I, I met Yi. Down here a week or two ago, I can't remember exactly the day, but we were awarded this plaque. Uh, the among American Center Incorporated, among Wassa Festival recognizes the Village of Weston. Um, with grateful appreciation for your dedication and contributions to make our event a success in two thousand twenty-one. Signed by yours truly, Yi Lang Zhong. Among Wassa Festival Chairperson. And, uh, it's the first time I, uh, attended. I, I've been asked several years in a row by Yi, and for whatever reason. Um, I wasn't able to make it. Uh, we were family camping, so I got up early to come and I was absolutely amazed, shocked, thrilled. Uh, I sat there for three hours listening to speeches, and Yi had me right up front, no, I'm just kidding. But, um, honestly, it was actually amazing, and I gained five pounds. Uh, because the midway, the food, all the food was coming down the midway right into the speaker's tent, and just smelling the food, I gained five pounds. And, uh, I, it was, it was amazing. I mean, uh, just fantastic, so. Uh, I also found out that between Yi and Nick Akwic, you're actually the two, right? Probably you more so than Nick, but that actually started this, and I, I thought you had fourteen thousand people?
Fourteen thousand.
Fourteen thousand, a record attendance. It was, it was unbelievable when I was going around, I mean, they carted me around like royalty, and, uh, cause I was a speaker and I had some. Uh, special thing around, Barb was there, Husheng was there, George was there, Nate was there, I saw him walking around. But, uh, it was, if you have never been there, you need to, you need to, it's phenomenal.
It's amazing.
Watching the sporting events and stuff, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Did they figure out what's, what was the economic impact of it in the community?
Uh, they said over two million dollars, so, uh, and twenty nineteen was two point seven, so they definitely think it's probably closer to three million or over. Yeah. But, uh, all hotel rooms within an hour of Wassa was booked. I tried looking for hotel rooms on that day. No, they were gone. And I could not find any hotel rooms at all. Yeah, they were, I, I drove up late, and I didn't know, I, I wasn't paying attention where I was supposed to go and park, cause I had special parking, I didn't, I didn't, I just didn't realize it. So I got, I get up to the certain gate, and there is, I mean, thousands of people walking from the, the Wassa Municipal Airport to the event. I mean, that's quite a height.